Good evening. This is a meeting of the Greenwich -- it's on. Of the Greenwich Planning and Zoning Commission. Before we begin, the following applications have been postponed. Number two, Greenwich Hotel LP, Greenwich Center LP, Havemeyer Lane, for a replacement pumping station at 1800 East Putt. Number three, Palmer Island LLC, for a final coastal subdivision at 10 South End Court. Number four, Palmer Island LLC, for a final coastal site plan. Number five, the same, Palmer Island also for a final site plan. Number seven, Terry Tatar, for a final subdivision at Zero Oak Street. Number eight, Calabrese Property and Mariano Lozano, for a final subdivision at 16 and Zero Lakeview. Number 12, 19 West Elm Holdings LLC, FSP, for a final site plan and a special permit. This evening, we will begin with the first item, and Victoria Goss will be seated for Mr. Levy for this application, as he will be a few minutes late. The first application is Andrew Greco, at 10 Susan Lane, for a final site plan to create an affordable housing unit in the building. And with that, hello? Yes, please. If you're the person who's -- are you Andrew?
I'm Andrew Greco.
Hello.
So, shall I explain what I'd like to do?
Yes, please.
Okay. So, I bought a single-family home in Riverside. It's zone R-12 for an accessory apartment. When I bought the home, the accessory apartment was already existing. My understanding, it's been there since 1973. I didn't realize that it was noncompliant until I received a notice in the mail saying that there was a violation. So, I would love the opportunity to make that a legal accessory apartment. Currently, my mom lives there, and I plan to keep it that way.
Keep your mom.
If you look at the application, there's no rent, because there is no rent exchange in the transaction. I believe that it meets the criteria. It looks like a single-family house. I have some additional pictures. May I ask these out?
Yes, please. And just make sure that one of the two people, all the way down on your right, gets a copy if you don't have enough.
So, the first picture is the exterior of the house, if you were on Susan Lane. The second picture to the right is that doorway that's directly to the right of the garage. You enter there. There's a staircase with a separate doorway that goes up to the main house. And then, if you go about seven or eight feet to the right, there's the third picture there is the doorway that opens up into a unit. I believe there's some questions about egress. So, I took some dimensions of the windows within the bedroom that exist in the apartment, and also a picture of the exterior.
What's minimum width for egress? Isn't it 32?
Thirty-six by forty.
It's 36, so he needs a bigger window. But then, he can just put in a bigger window.
No, he's got to give a whole length.
Yeah, okay.
It's going to be deeper. It's 24 by 30.
Is it 5'7"?
Yeah.
5.7 square feet of clear open.
Okay. I could easily add, you know, modify that opening to put in an egressment window that opens up.
Yeah, that's what I had to do in my --
You have to really check this, because actually, if there's a suspicion of existence off the floor as well.
Okay, understood.
So, you'll be able to get that?
Would that be -- yeah, definitely. Is that the --
All of us have them on. Don?
Is that the fire marshal would come and inspect that, once the window's installed?
Yeah.
Building Department.
Building Department. But you'll have to -- well, he would also have -- no? Not the fire marshal for legal fire egress? No? Okay, building department, would they say?
Understood.
Okay. So, you're going to have to do that.
Okay, no problem.
We had a question about whether or not you were going through the garage to enter.
So, right now, that is the only way to enter.
Is that a door next to the garage, though?
Yes.
So, but that door goes into the physical garage where the cars are?
Right. So, that door is the -- the second picture on the right is that door open. And there's a staircase upstairs, and then to the left. I don't store anything in the garage, because there's a laundry area in the back. It's really not big enough to put a car in there. It's not used, you know, for any vehicles or anything like that.
I think when you've got a --
In that case, you may want to, if there's enough parking on the property, close off the garage and then have the door come in the side, so you don't -- so it doesn't look like you have two front doors. And also, because you need people -- if there's cars coming into that garage area, fumes and that kind of thing would be in the apartment. So, first of all, I don't think it meets the zoning regulations.
Okay.
Because you have the two front doors, but also because of the -- I don't think you can have a front door into the garage.
So, you can't have like a --
Yeah, you can.
You can't have a side, because it would be really complicated. It's all cinder --
Why you have to walk through a garage now?
It's a garage door.
Yeah, that's fine, but to walk into a garage like that --
No, you can't access accessory unit through the garage.
Right, that's a --
Yeah, so you'll have to figure out how to fix that.
Okay. So, if the garage door itself was closed, so it's no longer a garage, the side -- you can't have two egress doors on one side of a house?
No, you could.
Because it's going to be really complicated. It's all cinder block on the left side.
On the left side.
Which is the only other place where it would be pretty difficult. And then, also, the grade goes up, because the house kind of slopes.
All that we're saying is, you need that door that goes into the house.
Understood.
Needs to be relocated, so you're going into the house versus the garage.
Okay.
So, you can go into that front door. You should be in the house, and then have a door separating the garage from the dwelling.
Well, there is a -- so, if you enter the garage, the next photo, the third photo, is a fire door that goes into the unit.
So, you are not entering into the garage.
Yeah.
You enter in -- you first enter to that door to the side of the garage?
Yeah.
You walk about 10 feet into the garage, and then there's the other door. There's a second door into the unit.
Correct. That's what we're saying.
Right.
You have to create a hallway.
Okay.
To get to that door.
Or eliminate the garage altogether.
Yeah.
Okay, so that would also meet the criteria.
Yeah.
Okay.
See, the section that I'm referring to, Ms. Alvin, states that the conversion is intended to create an accessory apartment that is clearly incidental and secondary to the primary unit, so as to preserve the appearance of the dwelling and the single-family character. Accordingly, there should be no exterior evidence of the accessory use that is visible from the street. And two front doors has generally been considered --
Yeah, but I was thinking, it's really just a side door to the garage, is what they have. But --
Yeah.
And it's existing.
I mean, it's like, we have side doors.
They're usually on the side of the house, though.
Right, but some people have them next to their garage.
Yeah. I mean, I guess because there's an elevation change in if you were going to close off the garage. Now, the next issue, of course, is going to be, how do you keep the unit, that enclosed garage space, so that it's not part of the unit? Because now, that's going to be adding that garage space, because it's 783 square feet now, generally speaking.
Yes, I believe. Just I took the measurements on the packet that I submitted.
Okay, because then adding --
But wouldn't that still be part of the main dwelling?
No.
There's a staircase straight ahead that goes to -- The way I conceptualize it is, I've been to multiple multifamily residences in the town, where you enter one door, there's a common hallway, and there's two access points to two different apartments. So, that's kind of what this is.
But that area is not supposed to be from the front, though. You see, it's not -- it's supposed to be a hidden unit, so to speak. So, you're not supposed to -- I mean, if you had a front door.
I would say, I mean, if the intent of the town is so it doesn't look like a two-family house, I would say, no one would assume that this is a two-family dwelling, just based on that visual. It looks -- I mean, I take excellent care of the property. It doesn't look like it's a two-family establishment. I'm happy to make the window compliant. I totally understand that. I'll find out.
Well, that's good, and the other thing is to just figure out how to have the access not be through the garage.
I can put in -- I could probably put in a hallway, so that therefore, no vehicle -- it won't be wide enough for a vehicle to enter. And there'll be a separate -- and then, the garage itself won't count as towards the square footage, because it'll be a separate.
So, how are you going to close off the garage from the unit?
So --
Like, in other words, how are you preventing the garage from counting towards the floor area?
Yeah, so --
Well, it counts for his main house.
Not if it's part of the unit, though. Right now, it's part of the unit.
So, you can go to both the main house and the unit from that hallway.
Okay, so this is not the way we've interpreted this regulation before.
No, no, but I'm saying --
It's fine if you do it this way, but it is a change.
No, but so you go in that door, and there's a hallway. You can go up to your main residence, or you can go down to the accessory.
Right, we've never done that before. It's fine if you want to do it that way, but it's never been interpreted that way. That you can have, like, a vestibular area. It's supposed to be one entrance into the unit, and then one entrance into the -- Not one entrance into a common area, so to speak. Like, there's no common area. You know what I mean? Is there a way to have -- and you said you can't come in from the side with the door, because I'm thinking if you made like a hallway through the -- Well, no, because then you'd be closing off where the washing room is.
Unfortunately, I wish there was -- so that, on the backside of the property --
You can just open the door and go?
On the backside of the property, it's -- there's no windows whatsoever. So, there's -- you'd basically -- it would be a lot of excavating. It would be very, very intense. You'd have to break through the foundation of the whole house.
I mean, it's almost worth him going to seek a variance for the size of the unit. Unless the storage unit -- is there the storage units that's in the -- that's this space right here?
That's part of like the living area. That's part that's a floor plan that I got when I bought the house.
Oh, okay, so that's --
But it's part of the living area. It's like a finished space. It's not like a ten unfinished area.
Right. Doesn't comply, so it's going to be over 800.
What would make it over the 800?
Because you'd have to add the garage space into the unit, once it gets enclosed.
How about this? So, it's going to be a lot more costly, but if on the right side of the house, if I made an -- if I excavated and made an entry point from there.
Perfect.
That works?
Yeah, where -- you mean, right here?
Yeah, or if --
Yes.
Right, or if you --
Like, so you come into the unit through the living room, basically?
Correct.
Yeah, that would be great, because then the doors on the side of the -- Yeah, the doors on the side of the house, and then you could close off the garage side. Like, and you could just leave the garage.
So, that's fine.
You could leave the garage at that point. You wouldn't even have to enclose it.
Is that egress door fine, then? That it's existing now, I could leave there, or I have to close it?
Yeah, I think at that point, it's just part of the garage. So, yeah, I think you could just leave it at that point.
Okay, so that's -- so, if I make an entry there, and I --
Because it looks like there's an opening already where the window is?
Yeah, there's a small opening.
Yeah, so you could just go down the steps into the unit.
Okay. And the -- so, if I do that and do the escape window in the bedroom, then it would be compliant?
Yes.
How long do I have to make this compliant?
Five years.
As quickly as possible, that would be good.
Right. I mean, it's going to -- it's drastically increased the price to make this.
Well, not really, because a second ago, you were going to be creating a wall for the garage, so now it actually might be cheaper.
Well, some 2x4s and drywall is a little cheaper than excavating and cutting into the foundation.
Is it that -- because I'm just looking at the photo. It doesn't seem like it's -- it just looks like you would be removing a few bushes and --
But that's -- so, all the white area is cinder block? So, you'd have to go down --
Oh, I see, okay.
You'd probably have to go down about seven feet, then you have to worry about drainage. So, I'd have to build in like a steps and --
Maybe the thing to do is to leave this open, and let us then -- for you to come in and meet with staff, and we could try to brainstorm something that's --
That works.
And then come back to another meeting. Would that be okay with the commission? Try to come up with a solution that works?
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, but one thing could be that you can just get a variance.
Right, that might be a solution. That might be easier.
What would the variance be for?
He's going to meet with staff.
They're going to try and figure out a way of doing this, and then we'll leave it open. But the other thing we could do is, he could just go get a variance for having it be too big a unit.
Right.
But then, that means he keeps the door where it is.
Right, which might be the way to go.
Okay.
If that's okay with you.
Yeah, it was okay, but, you know, when you said it had never been done before, I was like, okay, yeah. Okay, so you want to do that, and just leave it open? You have -- if you give us an extension for that, you have until September, the 21st of September, and work out a solution.
Definitely.
And the, you know, since you're making an effort to fix this, mom can stay.
I mean, I'm actually like, the whole reason I'm going through this is because I want to keep that second kitchen.
Absolutely.
So, my interpretation of the law is the only way I can keep that second kitchen is if I make it an affordable unit.
Right, right.
Because I'm not looking to collect rent. I'm not, you know, that's really all I'm doing, is, you know, keep kitchens in the house.
Right. But we want you to be able to keep the unit.
Right.
Because it does, for a variety of reasons.
Yeah, it actually does.
So, that's not the issue. It's just we want to make sure that it's complying with the regulations.
I mean, I'm a police officer in town, so I'm not looking to pull the wool over anyone's eyes or anything.
So, just come back, if you give us an extension, staff will work it out with --
And I can meet with DNC in the meantime.
Yeah, and they'll figure it out, and then -- and make sure you have all the -- They'll make sure you have all the right approvals, and then we'll get it done.
Okay, thank you so much for your time.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next application is Charles Ziegah.
Yes, but he's up to 800. He's at like 784 right now. And then, if he closes in that hallway, he goes over 800. That's why he'd need a variance.
I keep looking for the enlargement button, but I can't find it on this remote.
Do you want to be taller?
No, I want to expand certain portions of my plans on the screen.
Well, let me first say that this is -- that our next application is Charles Ziegah, trustee with a final coastal site plan at 122 Cedar Cliff. And Victoria Goss is seated for Mr. Levy on this as well. Okay.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commission members.
Good evening, Mr. Hegney.
For the record, Tom Hegney, on behalf of the applicant. We were here at the March 14th meeting, and there were two items outstanding. One was Public Works approving the revised plan that Mr. DeAndrea prepared in response to Redness and Mead's comments. And we received that from engineering. And we wanted to resolve a couple of issues with zoning enforcement in terms of FAR, grade plane walls, and sections. And as you have seen from the memo from Mr. Kuchar dated June 4th, he is now agreed that we are in compliance. We just submitted to staff a map that shows that we comply with the green space, which was a question that came up yesterday.
Yes, we were missing the green space numbers. What is your green space?
72.1.
Oh, okay.
It's a little close.
Hey, you made it, though.
Just makes it.
Okay.
It's conforming.
All right.
We have received Health Department approval for the septic and Wetland approval for the project. So, we would ask for your approval as well.
One question. The reason that -- one of the reasons you changed this is because you had some comments from Redness and Mead. There's been nothing since then from them. Are they accepting the new drainage with the 25-year storm capture?
I don't know. What I do know is that our town engineer has reviewed it, and he accepts it. And that's really what counts.
Okay, but we were being responsive to neighbor concerns, and we wanted to know if they had been addressed.
Well, and Mr. DeAndrea did prepare a letter along with the plans, saying these are all the things he had done to respond to the Redness and Mead comments. And I didn't think that there was more that they would need to say. It's really our town engineer saying, is this acceptable or adequate?
Commissioners, any comments on this? Okay. In that case, excuse me, do we have any public comment? In that case, we will close this application? Yes, agreed, closed. And Mr. McRae, might I have a motion?
Application of PLPZ 2019-0067, Final Coastal Site Plan, Constructed New Dwelling, Driveway Pool, Terraces, and Drainage and Landscaping on a 1.2-acre property located at 122 Cedar Cliff Road in the RA1 Zone. Motion to approve application. Zoning has reviewed and okayed the application. Applicant has provided green space to staff with a figure of 72.1%. Engineering has reviewed and has okayed the project for zoning building permit. Applicant has addressed neighbors' comments, neighbors' engineers' comments, line by line. The Health Department has provided an approval on a septic system. Department DEEP has provided an okay for that.
Okay, yep. You've got IWWA, deep, ZEO, drainage.
Yes.
And health.
Yes.
And that we have the green area.
Yes.
We don't have anything from Conservation in here.
No.
So, and any other outstanding departmental staff or departmental comments?
Ms. Alvin, just quickly, before you take the official vote.
Yes, ma'am.
The agendas that are over on the table over there incorrectly note that Mr. Fox is recused. He's not recused. He was just absent at the previous meeting. So, the official agenda that's on the website and that you have in front of you notes it correctly, but inadvertently, the incorrect agenda was printed for the public this evening.
Yeah.
And it says the wrong thing. So, just for the record, Mr. Fox is not recused.
He's not recused. He was absent.
He was absent.
And Mr. Yaski is seated for him on this application.
That's correct, just because he was absent, not because he's recused.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so that -- the vote on this is Alvin, McRae, Goss, Yaski, and Hardman. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Mr. Hardman seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
And now, we dig deep to get to our next application. Wait, wait, is it 7:15? Yes, it is. And so, with that, we open the public hearing. And our first application in the public hearing is, oh, is Nine River -- is number nine. It's River Road Development LLC, with a final coastal site plan at 89 River Road. And again, no, I'm good. I'm just sitting back. And Mr. Yaski is seated for Mr. Fox, who was absent, absent, at the last meeting.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission. For the record, Tom Hegney, on behalf of the applicant. We appeared in front of you at the April 16th meeting with this project, as well as the May 14th hearing. You asked us to return to the Architecture Review Committee, which we had also appeared in front of three times. And they approved the plan as revised with the design that we have as the rendering on the screen now. There were a few other things you wanted us to address as part of the March 14th hearing. We provided a parking and a traffic analysis, and parking analysis for that matter, which has been accepted as of memo today from your traffic consultant. We provide flood vents, which are on the south and east sides of the storage portion for the boat racks. We are -- we provided turning movements showing both the SU-30 vehicles entering the site, as well as the trailer carrying the boats. And as I indicated in my letter to you, this only happens five times in the spring and five times in the fall. The trailers are not kept on-site. This is to transport the boats to regattas that the club is participating in. There are no regattas held on the site itself, but this is just for transport. So, they come early in the morning and pick the boats up, and they leave and come back late the next day or the day after, depending on the length of the regatta. They're not kept, as I said, on-site. Engineering has approved for zoning permit. The DEEP had no comments. After the Conservation comments and review with the Architecture Review Committee, we added 16 additional shade trees, five to six inches in diameter, to the plan on the north and south sides along the road, and most significantly, in the parking lot itself in our drainage area. I wanted to spend a few minutes going through how we developed this plan and how the commission got to the point of adopting its regulations and the amendments to them in January of this year. The recognition, I think, for some time has been that the WB areas in town have stagnated. I think you can certainly recognize it most profoundly on South Water Street, and that something needed to be done. And this was a discussion that was had over a number of years. And about three years ago, the commission said we should have a consultant on this to do a study. So, you hired Malone and McBroom to conduct that study. There were a number of public hearings. Stakeholders and property owners, marina operators in the WB areas participated. The commission attended a number of those discussions to develop an awareness of what was needed and what would be helpful to provide for an impetus for upgrading this portion of town. Malone and McBroom prepared a report that they submitted to you. And you began, through the staff, to develop a regulation modification that culminated in what you adopted in January of this year. You submitted those plans in late 2017, that amendment, to DEEP. And the response you got back was, you can't have multifamily housing in a flood zone. And so, you spent some time looking at that and some other things that had arisen. And the plan at that time was to submit the amended regulations to you at the beginning of 2018. But because of these questions that came up from DEEP, that was delayed. With some further discussions with the state, it was determined that as long as you had the base flood elevation, whatever flood zone that was, from the front door of the structure to the street, that that would be acceptable, even if the building was in the flood zone. So, for example, here, we're in the AE11 zone. So, the DEEP said, if as long as you can show us that from the front door to the street, you can maintain at least an elevation of 11, that -- you can maintain at least an elevation of 11, that, uh, we will find that that is acceptable. I'm hoping that the state DEEP will further reflect on this, but that's, that's where we are now. And that's what was part of, of the hearings in the fall of 2018, which resulted in the adoption of the regulation that we have here. Along the way, a lot of the discussion was on, how do we provide this valuable resource and make it more accessible to the public? Rather than just focusing on solely the water-dependent uses. Can the public get more of an enjoyment, uh, from the water and at the water, uh, by providing more access? And so, uh, the, uh, the carrot was, we will allow some other uses on these properties. And the stick was, but you have to provide public access. And although there was a requirement for the design of public access along the water before, the Commission said, oh, we want it to be something more significant. Uh, so we want at least a fifteen-foot wide easement, and we want the walkway itself to be 10 feet wide, which is significantly more than what the Commission had asked for in, in the past. And we want it to appear to be a useful amenity. And ultimately, we want it to join with others along the water, uh, so that it's not just one property that's involved. So, uh, for example, on River Road, uh, you required that for the Brunswick Boathouse, which is immediately to the north of my client's site. Uh, you required it immediately to the south on a very small parcel, uh, that came in recently, to have, uh, public access along that. Uh, and then, uh, the Water Club, uh, has a more significant, uh, uh, walkway along the water. So, you end up with something that's really significant, not just, uh, a single property standing by itself. So, uh, as you develop these regulations, that was part of the thought process that we need to be thinking more about the overall public enjoyment, uh, of the water. You also said you want to maximize whatever waterside uses are available. Uh, so, for example, in our project, there are 21 boat slips and the enhanced dock for, uh, the Rowing Club. Uh, the Rowing Club will be able to, uh, store the, the larger boats, uh, the Adore boats, on that dock, uh, and will be able to provide 21 boat slips, uh, in the rest of the riparian rights that this, uh, that this site has. Uh, so we're able to maximize, uh, that, uh, that water, uh, use. We also wanted to make sure that we were providing adequate parking for the boat slips and for access to the water. Uh, so there are two dedicated parking spaces for public access. Uh, and, uh, there are ten boat, uh, ten parking spaces, so, ten parking spaces associated with the boat slips, which fits within, uh, the requirement that you adopted, uh, in January. The regulation said that you would allow for offices, restaurants, and residential. And, uh, in looking at the appropriateness for this site, uh, we chose the residential. Given the size of the parcel, we would be entitled to 14 units, uh, on the site. Uh, we are proposing 12. And, uh, of course, the rest is occupied by the Rowing Club. On the footprint, the first floor of the structure, uh, 907 square feet is associated with the lobby and staircases for access to the apartments above. So, out of the, the roughly, uh, 10,000 square feet we have on the first floor, only 907 square feet, uh, is associated with, uh, the apartment use.
On the first floor? On the first floor?
On the first floor. Well, when you look at, at footprint or coverage, you look at the largest floor, and the largest floor here is the first floor. The, the second and third floors with the apartments stepped back. So, they're not as large as the, uh, the footprint, uh, and coverage of the first floor. Uh, what, what really brings us here, uh, is you approved the plan in 2016 for a rowing club. Uh, and, uh, my client worked very diligently to see if that, uh, would work, uh, from an economic standpoint, and, uh, was unable to do so. This building, uh, is designed with the application, with the, uh, regulation that you adopted, uh, in, uh, in January of this year. Uh, and that's, uh, that's how we brought about this specific, uh, design. Uh, I don't think there were any other real outstanding issues, but I'm, uh, certainly willing to hear your comments.
Do you have any comments from the Commission?
The Harbor Management Commission's, um, letter, has that been circulated?
Yes, we all have it. You have the letter from the Harbor Management Commission, Mr. Hegney?
Yes, I do.
And, um, yeah, I think it'd just be interesting if you could give us your response. Uh, they raised several objections, which I won't go through, but, uh, and I think you've covered some of them qualitatively, but, uh, I appreciate hearing what your response is.
Uh, I, I think you, as a Harbor Management Commission, you would want to encourage the ability to access the water and to, uh, uh, have the public appreciate it. And I'm, I'm not sure that that came through, uh, in their letter. When I look at, uh, the particular, uh, complaint, uh, that was expressed, which I think is sort of the, the one that is the fulcrum here, uh, it's on, uh, section 6 dash 107 E2B of the regulations. And, uh, I, I went through that regulation and, and thought about it a bit, and looked at how it reads and how we want to make sense of it based on the rest of the regulation that you adopted, particularly the 7C uses and the, uh, the density requirement or, or, that's permitted as part of the, uh, the, the part of this revised regulation. And when I look at, uh, the language, it, it really says to me that it was contemplating more than one building on the property. Because it limits the 7C uses to 15%, but your regulations allow for 30% coverage in the WB zone. So, if I had a, uh, a rowing club that was occupying 15% of the site, I could then have another building that would have office or restaurant or, uh, or apartments that would occupy another 15% coverage on the site. Uh, what we've done here is we haven't put that 15% coverage in, uh, for the residential. We've put it on top of the 7B use, which can have up to 30%. So, except for that 907 square feet on the first floor, I don't think that the use that we are providing in the second and third floors increases the coverage, because the coverage is already there from the, uh, first floor rowing club use, which is the 7B.
But you said that...
Which can be up to 30%.
You said the upper two floors are stepped back anyway, though, and if the building itself is 18%, what are, what are the second and third floors?
The second floor is about 16 and the third floor is about 15 and a half.
So, there's no way to make the second and third floor 15? And then you have to add what's from the first floor?
Well, it...
No, not necessarily.
I don't know. Uh, yeah, well, let, let me play this out a little bit more in terms of other, um, 'cause, 'cause other scenarios. Let, let's say I had a rowing club that was 30% of the lot coverage on. I wanted to have a snack bar on the second floor. Snack bar is a 7C use. Let's say it's only 500 square feet. Does that add to my 30% even though it's sitting on the roof? Uh, it, when, when you look at other scenarios, it doesn't really make sense unless you're looking at it as a separate building that occupies coverage on the lot versus having a second or third floor. I suppose we could take the second and third floor and put it over on the parking lot, and that would be, and if we had 15% for the, uh, for the rowing club, we could have a 15% footprint there. But, uh, I don't think that the regulation was intended to prohibit second and third floors, because it clearly says, rather than two and a half stories, we're willing to give you three stories to use toward these other uses such as restaurant, office, or, or apartments.
Let me ask you the one other question they raised, and someone else may ask this later, but the theoretical that if, for some reason, the ground floor use, water-dependent use ceased to exist, then we created a backdoor or a loophole, as I read their letter.
Uh, well, except for the fact that your own regulations, as adopted, say that if the use does change, it has to come back here for another special permit. So, uh, and, and that's often the case with these kinds of regulations. Uh, if it changes to something else, uh, you want to see it, you want to see if it's appropriate, and you want to be able to approve it, uh, for that, uh, different use.
Thanks, I just wanted to make sure we raised this, uh, at least from, from the Commission's side.
Thank you.
Mr. Hegney? What's the difference in the 3% in square foot? Uh, you know, the difference between 18 and 15, what, how much is that in square feet on the building?
Eighteen thousand, 238.8 square feet.
What, no, 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 total?
Eighteen hundred, eighteen hundred twenty-three point eight.
Well, you have to do it in the coverage, though.
You can give my client a heart attack with 18,000.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I had 1800.
Eighteen hundred, yeah.
Well, it's actually less than that, because it's a, it's not at 18, it, the upper levels are at 16. Because the snack, the snack bar argument doesn't make, the, the snack bar is a 7B use, as long as it's less than 750. So, once it gets over 750, then it becomes the restaurant. Because you're entitled to have, you know, food service, that's always been part of the regulation.
So, so perhaps my example was a bit extreme, but if I had 1,000 square foot snack bar, then that would be, that would be a 7C, that would be the restaurant. Would that create more coverage if it's on the second floor of, of the rowing club?
Well, you can't have, just, just to give another example and the other, because the, the argument, um, is that the, um, the, the WB areas are different. So, you've got, you've got, um, as you correctly pointed out, the, this is a waterfront business zone. That's the first priority in the zone. And you've done what the regulation asked for, and you've maxed out the waterfront area. And, um, once you've maxed out the waterfront area, then, um, you could do these other uses. So, in COSCOB, there, just as it turns out, generally speaking, of course, most of the properties in, in the COSCOB WB have a lot of water area. So, there's a lot of water-dependent use that can occur. But that's not the case in Byram, where you have a lot of land and not a lot of water. So, what you don't want to have happen is for someone to say, well, here's my token three boat slips, and now I'm going to build a whole bunch of residential or a whole huge gigantic restaurant. That was not the intent of the regulation. The intent of the regulation was to have a thriving waterfront business zone, and in order to make that happen, to allow to have some sort of offset. So, the concept behind the 15% was that you can have these non-water-dependent uses that are restricted to a smaller area in the property. So, to your point, if you wanted to have, you know, 30% rowing club on the first floor and then a separate building area 15% on the first floor, that would be in compliance with the regulation. So, if you have, um, if you have, as you have here, um, you know, because you take, take the other example, if you had 40% of the site that was a marina, that doesn't mean that you're entitled to 40% of the upper level as residential. That was not the intent. The intent was to minimize the non-water-dependent uses on the property, so that they do not exceed 15%. So, in this instance here, you can have whatever percentage you want of, of water-dependent use, which in this case is 18, so that can stay.
Correct.
But on the upper levels, it's supposed to be restricted to 15, and you're so close. If you're at 15 and a half, you're, you're less than 1800, you're probably close to, Mr. Yeski, you're calculating over there.
Well, you mean in terms of extra?
Right, like, in other words, what would have to be reduced on the second?
What's that half percentage of, it would have been 16,000.
Well, the third is 15 and a half, the second was 16,000.
Right, so, so you...
But, but when you look at the regulation, it talks about coverage.
Building coverage, correct.
Right, and the second floor doesn't create any building coverage. It's the first floor that creates the building coverage unless the second floor is cantilevered, past the footprint.
Mr. Hegney, the, the 2B section, uh, states, um, uh, "Provided that the total building coverage of any building or structure occupied by Use Group 7 shall be no more than 50% of the gross floor area." Occupied by the gross, by the 7C. Okay, so we're talking about occupation, not the footprint. You're actually, yeah, like you said before, if you had all of the WB compliance, the walkway, the use, that kind of thing, then you could, uh, have a building of 15, no more than 15% for a 7C use. But e- even if you stacked it, it's that, that occupied use of 7C. So, it's 50, you're limited to 15% no matter where it is, whether it's on top of another building or on the ground.
So, let's say my 7B or 7A use was 30%. I'm allowed a point five, so I take that other point two percent, and I add that to the second floor. Would I not be permitted to do that?
No, because you're, you're limited to the 15% of the lot for the seven, the gross lot area for the 7C uses only.
You can have whatever lot coverage is permitted on, in the regulation.
Which is 30%.
For, for the, um, water-dependent uses. So, if you had 30% of the lot covered with a marina operation, an office for a marina, let's say, and that's compliant, and that's a water-dependent use, you still cannot then add 30% of apartments on top. Or restaurant. It's supposed, that's supposed to be limited.
Here, we have a significant portion of our building, 18% of the lot area on our, uh, first floor, which is a 7B use.
And that's permitted, the first floor.
Which is permitted and encouraged.
Encouraged.
And, uh, and then we're looking at what, how the regulations read in terms of utilizing, uh, density, which would allow us, as I said earlier, 14 units, we have proposed 12. Um, and, and we're not increasing our footprint or our coverage through that. We're maintaining the, the 18% of the 7B.
Can I follow up that second question I had? What's the average size of the apartment on the second floor or the third floor, average?
There's, there's a reason I asked John Halper here this evening.
Check it, I think it's the old language, that's why I'm going online to look at it.
My quick number says closer to like 2,800, but, uh, I, I...
No, I think it's about 15, 1500.
You know, it's interesting, 1500, and you're over by 18 to 2,000, I'm not sure, something like that.
I don't have the number up.
Could one of those apartments become water-dependent use?
No, it's just easier to...
Shrink the whole building?
Well, it would have, sorry, it would have to be two dimensionally, you'd have to measure that out. So, if you took it on one floor, the third floor, let's say it's on the second floor, you add that use, the third floor would still be larger than fifteen percent.
So, you'd have to increase the size on the second floor to get the percentage down, right?
Or you'd have to reduce the second and third floor.
Yeah, I think, I think they're trying to prevent reducing the whole building. That's a lot of work.
But they don't have to reduce the whole building, just the second and third floor. But to your, to your point, I mean, if they made, if they made more balcony instead of, instead of living space, or if, or if they, like you said, or if they changed.
If you took one apartment and made it water dependent, and maybe it's bigger than that eighteen hundred because it does go up, would that fit the regulations?
There's your snack bar.
So, it's actually, actually, basically coming in on, you know, shrinking the building on each side by a few feet, we're actually, what, sixteen percent and fifteen percent? So, actually bringing it in on each elevation a little bit would still comply, right? Okay? Because then actually, as long as it's at fifteen or less for each floor, they're still good.
Right.
Okay? So, in a sense, actually, like you said, if it's, they're at about fifteen, sixteen, if the balconies were bigger, it was brought in, it was brought in smaller, keeping the footprint, the first floor footprint is fine.
Yeah, and the first floor footprint can increase, I mean, that could go to thirty if they wanted.
Okay. But then again, so, as an example, if you take, say.
Mr. Halper would be embarrassed by that.
What's that?
A thirty percent first floor with a fifteen percent second floor. Big terraces.
We still have to provide parking, so that's a bit of an impediment for expanding the footprint further. Unless there are other issues you want me to review with you, what I'd like to do is, when you have public comment, have an opportunity to speak with my client about what you're suggesting.
Sure. I just had a little question, which is, I couldn't find that the sewer department ever got their question addressed when I went back and ticked off the list. It's not a huge deal, that's all. And now, so, before Mr. Hagney steps down, does anybody else want to ask any questions, make any comments? Ms. Goss? No? Mr. Levy?
Not at this time.
Okay. Mr. Yeski, or do you have anything more? Okay. Mr. McCray?
I think it's just to make sure that we understand that this section, the B section says, the remaining available upland parking area may be used to support use group seven C use. A use group seven C use, provided that the total building coverage of any buildings or structures occupied by a use group seven C use shall be no more than fifteen percent of the gross lot area. I just want to make sure that we're clear on that, and that's what the language states.
Because it's, the sentence started by coverage. Yeah, it did.
Provided that the total building coverage of any buildings or structures occupied by the use group seven use.
Seven C use, yeah.
Seven C use. Shall be no more than.
It's probably, it works better.
I think that the important thing, though, is that we are the interpreter of the regulations, and that we have heard from one of the people who helped write them. And that is the interpretation that she offered.
Right, that it was.
How it was meant, that it was meant to be limited.
To fifteen percent.
To fifteen percent.
Say that again, Margaret.
That, that we are the interpreter of our regulations, but that our interpretation should be informed by the fact that Katie participated in writing this regulation and does know its intent. And the intent is that the seven C use not be more than fifteen percent of the lot.
Well, I think there's one interpretation, or maybe it's solely mine, that, you know, if there's a three-story building and there's eighteen percent coverage, you could attribute two-thirds of the eighteen percent to the residential.
You could, but this isn't, what Katie is saying is that's not what was meant when she worked on writing them, and that's the.
Because we, then we would have used floor area.
Right.
We would have used floor area in the terminology versus covered.
So, okay, so, the commission doesn't, yes, would you like to say?
I did have one more comment.
Yes, Mr. Hagney.
And it was to point out that your zoning enforcement officer found that it met the regulations for zoning permit sign-off, but for us showing him where the flood vents were in the storage area.
I'm aware of that. It seems that we have had some interpretation issue ourselves.
I can see that.
But I think we're getting there. Do I have any comments from the public? Mr. Haslam, hi.
I'll divert.
Okay, I couldn't tell who jumped up first. Hi.
Hi, good evening. I'm Mike Van Oost, I'm the chairman of the Harbor Management Commission.
The what? The Harbor Management Commission.
So, I thank you for your time.
Speaking to the phone.
Yeah, the mic's.
Is that better?
The sound system is not awesome.
I'd like to read the June eighth letter that we submitted to you.
Sure. It's in the record, though, we have included it in the record, but we'd be glad to.
Thank you. It was addressed to Ms. Katie DeLuca. As chairman of the Harbor Management Commission, I wish to provide some comments and questions regarding the above referenced applications by River Road Development LLC, the applicant. The applications seek to modify previously approved plans for development of a rowing club on the shoreline of Cos Cob Harbor at eighty-nine River Road. The current proposal would reduce the scope of the rowing club as previously approved at a third story and twelve residential units within the footprint of the previously approved building, construct twenty-one new boat slips available to the general public, and provide a fifteen-foot wide public access easement with a ten-foot wide walkway along the water. The HMC appreciates the planning and zoning commission's challenging task to evaluate the applications with respect to the two thousand nineteen amendments to the Greenwich Waterfront Business Zone regulations. These amendments were the subject of much discussion and careful deliberation by both the PNZ Commission and the HMC over many months in an effort to ensure the amendments do not adversely affect existing water dependent uses and future water dependent development opportunities, and therefore are consistent with the Greenwich Harbor Management Plan. As we have discussed at length, the Harbor Management Plan consists, contains a number of provisions to encourage and support the development and continued operation of water dependent land uses, and to ensure that the town's limited waterfront commercial areas are not redeveloped over time with principal site uses that are not water dependent. Pursuant to the plan, the HMC has stated its position that a pedestrian walkway in the River Road WB zone should not be considered as adequate substitutes for such water dependent uses as boat maintenance, repair, birthing, and storage facilities. We trust that the review of the eighty-nine River Road application is being conducted with the same high level of analysis and deliberation that characterized preparation and adoption of the WB zone amendments, and for the purpose of achieving the established priorities of the WB regulations, including the first priority set forth in section seven dash one oh seven A of the WB regulations to protect and nurture existing and potential water dependent uses. The PNZ's review of applications will set an important precedent for evaluation of future development proposals within the WB zones. We therefore ask the commission's findings and analysis with respect to the several tests required to determine the applicant's compliance with the WB zone regulations be clearly represented and made part of the public record. Among those tests to determine compliance with the WB zone regulations, the applicant must demonstrate that, number one, the proposed multifamily residential components of the development proposal will not interfere and are not incompatible with the development priorities set forth in section six dash one oh seven A of the WB regulations. Number two, the proposed residential development will be subordinate to or provide supportive services to a water dependent use. Number three, the majority of the waterside improvement will be in support of water dependent uses. Number four, the project has exhausted all of the developable areas suitable for water dependent uses. And number five, the building, including the proposed residential units, shall use no more than fifteen percent of the gross lot area. Absent clear compliance with the required tests, the requested special permit for modification of the previously approved development plan for this site should not be approved. When considering the applications, members of the HMC have raised questions concerning compliance of the proposed project with these tests. For example, the site's principal water dependent use to be among the seven A uses defined in the regulation is not clear. It appears that the principal water dependent use, as proposed on the upland portion of this site, would be, in quotes, a public waterfront access in the form of ten-foot wide walkway. Marinas, water-based recreation uses, dock facilities also are among the seven A water dependent uses, but it is not clear how these uses are incorporated into the upland portion of the developmental proposal. In addition, it is not clear how, as required, the proposed residential development, a listed use seven C, water enhanced use, would be subordinate to or provide supportive services to a use group A, water dependent use on site. HMC members have expressed concern about the future impact on site development should the proposed rowing club, a seven B water-related use, cease to operate on the site. In other words, would there be an opportunity for expansion of residential development or other water enhanced uses if the rowing club or any permitted marina facility are diminished? The HMC remains concerned that over time waterfront properties that are historically supported marine commercial water dependent uses may be redeveloped with residential and other principal site uses that are not truly water dependent but are considered compliant with Connecticut Coastal Management Act and WB zone regulations by virtue of providing pedestrian walkways and boat slips. To address this possibility, specific conditions of development approval should be applied. Any approval of multifamily dwellings over other water enhanced uses in the WB zone should be expressly conditioned on the underlying water dependent and water related uses, including the rowing club, being maintained and not diminished in any material way. This would mean that any future reduction in the scope of the water dependent and water related uses would render the multifamily dwellings and other water enhanced uses non-conforming in the WB zone. Failure to attach such conditions would result in an unintended loophole in the WB zone contrary to the established priorities of the regulations. Please be advised that the HMC has received the applicant's pre-application for plans for the in-water components of the pending development proposal, including the docks components. The HMC review of these plans prior to the, prior to their inclusion by the applicant in a permit application to the Connecticut Deep is required by Deep's coastal regulatory process. The HMC will be reviewing the submitted pre-application plans, including the proposed twenty-one boat slips for consistency with the policies of the Harbor Management Plan, and will provide its recommendations to Deep and the applicant. The applicant's intentions for managing the marina and providing services to boaters using the marina, including the upland requirements for doing so, will be a significant consideration during our review process, along with any additional information the HMC may require to conduct its review. Although Deep, as administrator of the Coastal Management Act, declined to comment on the applicant's proposal to the PNZ Commission, we are aware that upland site requirements for managing and operating the marina will be a significant consideration in Deep's coastal permitting process. Those requirements also should be considered in the PNZ Commission's review of the submitted development applications. The applicant's pre-application plans for in-water work subject to Deep regulatory process will be discussed during the HMC's next scheduled meeting on June nineteenth, two thousand nineteen. Insofar as the water dependency of the applicant's upland development proposal is intrinsically tied to the in-water components, including the proposed marina slips, it seems reasonable to suggest that final action by PNZ Commission on the proposal's compliance with the WB regulations take into consideration the results of a proper review of the proposed in-water components by Deep and the Harbor Management Commission. In conclusion, we appreciate the PNZ's commission consideration of our comments, and we look forward to additional discussions with your office and the applicant representatives concerning this important precedent-setting project affecting future use and condition of the Greenwich waterfront. We also look forward to continued coordination with the commission and your office to achieve our shared goals for encouraging and supporting water dependent uses of the Greenwich Harbor's areas. If you have any questions, want to discuss this, my contact information. Thank you sincerely, Mike Van Oost.
Commissioners, any questions? Mr. Van Oost, I did have a question for you. I didn't quite know what you meant when you say, we are aware that upland site requirements for managing and operating a marina will be a significant consideration, and that these requirements should be considered in the PNZ Commission's review of the submitted app. What did you intend us to do in that? Is it a summation of what you had said before, or were you thinking something different?
It comes back to the testing, to the prioritization of the seven A use.
Got it.
And, and I'll just add a little bit to that. The consistently, the Harbor Management Commission has expressed that, we don't consider a walkway as a primary seven A use, and we can't see where the residential development is subordinate to the seven A use because we can't find the seven A use. So, the way that that ties into, if you have slips, and you're calling them slips, but you're not calling it a marina, that to us indicates that you don't intend to build a marina, which would be a seven A use, supporting the.
The seven C.
The six one oh seven is, is very clear on seven A uses, and we don't see any in the application.
So, you're saying that the twenty-one public slips, you don't consider an asset to the harbor?
It's a, it's a separate, so the review of that portion of the application is independent of the, with, absent having the twenty-one boat slips, and absent seeing any services that are provided to those boat slips, it's difficult to call it anything other than condos with boat slips out front.
But all up and down River Road, there are town boat slips that don't provide service, there are public boat slips, and so you're saying all of those aren't water dependent uses, and we should discount them going forward?
What I'm saying is that the way that the amended six dash one oh seven A is written is a, I can give you the definition of, of seven A, but it talks about boat and marine engine, this is the new one, so, from just January, but use group seven A, water dependent uses, boat, boat and engine repairs, boatyards, assembling, processing, light mechanical operation, transportation excursion services, facilities for marine pollution control, harbor security, these are, these are all true seven A uses. The, if you have slips and you're not attaching a seven A use to them, then you haven't, upland, you haven't, you haven't provided a seven A.
But that section continues where it says processing of, or sale of seafood, public waterfront access, public or private marinas, water-based recreation, and dock and port facilities. Those are all also seven A uses.
Right. I believe that that comes back to that we feel we should, we should evaluate the boat slips along with the upland application in its, together.
How do you react to the principal nature of what's going to happen on this site, which is a very water dependent use that is a rowing club? And instruction, it seems like it's a very intensive water-related use in that regard.
The concern is that you have a, you have a three-story without any disrespect to the architect, but you have a three-story box, right? And two stories of it are residential, and in the bottom you have, you have facilities supporting a seven B use. And the, the seven C, right, the residential, is supposed to be subordinate to the seven B in this case. And we don't see, this is back to the loophole that you mentioned earlier. This is back to the loophole that you mentioned earlier. We don't see how it's protected as maintaining that seven B if it goes away.
It seems to me that there's a little bit of a marriage here between a water-dependent use and another use, which was the intent of the regulation, Katie. And my view is that, you know, this is an honest attempt to provide a very water-dependent use with the economics to make this viable from the owner's standpoint. That seems to me the underlying spirit of this regulation.
The... In regards to special permit requirements for group seven C uses, the... And number one, that the seven C are subordinate to or provide supportive services to the seven A use. Seven C, in this case being residential units, it's not subordinate, and it doesn't provide any services.
Well, but you look at the number of people using this site. The rowers greatly outnumber the residents, it seems to me.
But I agree with you.
And you are, you know, by adding sort of an economic outlet for the owner to realize a permanent rowing club here, that we've blended, you know, two aspects of what this regulation's intended to do.
Right, but you're talking about the seven B, not the seven C. The rowing is the seven B. The previous application, which had the rowing club on the property but didn't have the residential, the seven C, didn't create the same problem. Because the rowing club is seven B and the residential is seven C, so it's a different requirement.
It seems to me your principal thrust is the residential doesn't seem subordinate to the water use. Is that correct?
The previous development had zero public dock space. This new proposal, they're adding twenty-one boat slips, which are a seven A use. So I'm still trying to understand your premise that they're not providing a waterfront use under seven A. It's clearly in our regulation that private marinas and slips are a seven A use, and they're providing twenty-one spaces. So I'm trying to understand where your opposition is, because unless they provided those slips, they wouldn't be really, from my point of view, allowed to just do residential without enhancing the seven A use.
To agree with you, the slips are not part of the application that's in front of you tonight. It's a completely separate item that may or may not exist. It's not... The slips and facilities to support those slips is not part of this application. So we're talking about the upland part, and we're talking theoretically, hypothetically, about twenty-one boat slips. And really what the premise of our letter is, is that we feel like the merits of them together has to be evaluated, because you bring a valid point, that boat slips are a seven A use. Absolutely, I agree with you. But the application, as we're looking at it, doesn't have the boat slips. The boat slips are...
No.
They are absolutely a part of this application.
They're part of the application.
This could not be approved without those boat slips. So the water-dependent uses are the twenty-one boat slips, the dock for the rowing, the public access walkway. So this, without those boat slips, they are absolutely a part of the application.
But the Harbor Management Commission hasn't had a chance to evaluate the boat slips yet, though. And that's what we're... We would like to evaluate it together as a package.
I mean, they've been part of the application since March eighth, when they were submitted.
The application for the boat slips just came a couple weeks ago to the application.
That might be the one that's through the DEEP, but if... These are... I don't know what you mean by that, because these have always been a part of this application. What do you mean, but when you say the application for the boat slips only just...
The boat slip through... The boat slip application through Deep just came through us. We haven't had a chance... It's on... We're going to review it on the June nineteenth meeting. We haven't had a chance... We haven't commented on the slips. And support of those slips and it as a package is what we're saying is important. That, along with if the water... If the seven B use goes away, then Mr. Hegney mentioned that, well, then they'd be back in front of the Commission talking about alternates, I guess, but we see that as if it goes away, then...
So, Mr. Venos, do you think that you will make a decision on the nineteenth of June?
On the boat slips?
Yeah.
I would imagine so, yeah.
Okay. I think that we... Our discussion is indicating that the applicant is going to make some changes to their architectural plans and would have to give us an extension. Now, the applicant can refuse to give us an extension. If they agree to give us an extension, you would have time to review it. But as Katie says, this has been before us for some months. So what it says to me is that we should have made sure that you were aware of the application much earlier, because it sounds as if you've only recently come into the loop. That we should have made sure that you were commenting, because we know that there's been the possibility of the twenty-one boat slips since March. So we should have made sure that you were aware of it before you got it from Deep. Is that fair?
I suppose, if you want to say... Just like any department gets routed plans, there's comments agendas that go out before meetings that say, you know, here are your comments, request for comments.
But one of our goals is always... We get the fact that the left hand's doing this, the right hand's doing that, and it doesn't always connect. It sounds that next time there's an occasion like this one, we need to make sure everything connects a little better. But we have had this since March, and it happens to still be open with us because it's gone through so many revisions to satisfy other committees' comments. But at this point, we have comments that if the applicant is willing, it sounds like we're going to want to leave it open. So that would give you time, and I think that addresses your primary concern.
We would appreciate time.
And I do hear you. We're not the ones who approve the boat slips, but we would condition an approval on those boat slips being part of the whole package. So even if we approved it tonight, it would be a no-go if you didn't agree to it, if you didn't agree to the twenty-one slips.
Just to be clear, the jurisdiction, and correct me if I'm wrong, the jurisdiction on the docks is actually the DEEP, so you can comment to them and say you don't like them, let's just say for the sake of argument, but they could approve them anyway.
Deep...
But we would still...
Right, they do what?
So the jurisdiction is with Deep, not with the Harbor Management.
Yeah. But what I'm just... But I'm saying we condition our approval regardless on it having twenty-one slips.
Right.
Right.
Absolutely.
Right. So no matter what, if there aren't twenty-one slips, our approval fails to stand if we were to approve it right this minute.
Right. And then the other concern is, and it's a legitimate concern, is if the rowing club goes away in a year, then how do you protect against that?
And you heard that answer. It's a special permit use, so they still have to come back to us. They can't do something different there without coming back to us.
And it can't be residential because of the flood delay.
So it has to come back to us, and nothing can happen there without us hearing it again.
So that ground...
And that's the protection.
That ground floor has to be a seven A, seven B use for...
In perpetuity.
It's got to be. It can't go to a seven C, and it can't go... It's got to be a seven A or seven B.
I mean, we have had instances where people have been doing something else in the WB zone. I think you're aware of them, but zoning enforcement has gotten on to those, and I think the major one I can think of is gone. So... But it would have to come back to us for review if the rowing club didn't work.
Okay.
So I think that works for you, what we're saying?
It comes back to you, so, yeah, I mean, it has to.
Even if one of the existing boatyards wanted to change its use, it would have to come to us, because it's a different... If it wanted to go from seven A to seven B, it would have to come to us.
What if it made... And this is just playing devil's advocate. What if it's economically still viable to just have the bottom floor empty and not do anything there? Then they don't have to come back to you, then you have a two-story... You know, it's just a...
Again, that the seven B use was secondary to the twenty-one marina slips that in our marketplace now, I'm assuming they would be using those...
Right, I was curious if...
And public access.
If the seven B goes vacant, the seven C is still...
Seven A is still there.
By the same token, Mr. Venos, if the units don't get rented, or they will be vacant from time to time, it's the same theory. Spaces are vacant. You know, there's an approval and a use that is assigned to the site, and the owner is obligated to follow that. Whether it's successful or not is not our purview, the Commission's purview. It is... That's unfortunately the way that the economics of things work from time to time. So we will uphold the regulation, and we will, you know, follow the conditions of approval at granted, but it's not, you know, to sit here and talk about what could happen. I don't, you know, anything can happen, you know, that's the thing.
And the approval runs with the land. It doesn't run with the business owner. So whether it's Row America or, you know, Katie's rowing club, doesn't...
I didn't know.
It runs with the land, so that's the requirement for the site regardless of the operator.
Miss...
Yep.
Okay. So then, Mr. Haslam?
Shh, I got it.
Mr. Haslam, I know if I had Mr. Fox reminding me that you were behind the easel, I was not going to forget you, though.
Chip Haslam. I represent Fred Whalen, who lives across the street from this property, directly across the street and has for many years. Fred's a local attorney. I've known him for over thirty years. You may remember he spoke to you back in April when this matter first came before you and had indicated some concerns. I'd spoken to him that day, but I was out of town, so didn't have the opportunity to address you directly. I had Fred come into my office, and he indicated he was very upset about this, having expanded from being a rowing club to being a rowing club with residential units above and with incentives and height limitations removed, et cetera. So he was indicating he wanted to hire me to oppose this project, to oppose it vehemently. So when I talked to Fred over some period of time and tried to figure out exactly what his issues were to see if I could talk to Tom Hegney and if those issues could be addressed, ultimately, they really narrowed down to the fact that Fred was concerned about light pollution into his property right across the street and looking across the harbor. So I suggested to Tom and to his architect that perhaps they come up with some solution that might address Fred's issue, and this is the concept of having shades that would come down at dusk and go back up at dawn just on the western side of the building. And Tom spoke with his client, and he agreed to that condition, and I thought basically it was a good thing that we had worked things out between neighbors and that the Commission would look very favorably upon making this a condition of approval because we had worked out that issue. And I think you're trying to encourage those kinds of things. So when I watched on Channel seventy-nine that night in May, it did not have to be here, my matters were continued, that Tom started with that particular condition as a lead, thinking that it was a good thing. I was dismayed to see that the Commission didn't think it was a good thing and that it somehow interrupted people's rights to light and air. Mr. Fox?
We thought it was a great idea, but unenforceable from a zoning perspective.
I didn't think it was a great idea.
On a residential versus commercial. And that was our comment.
No, I didn't think it was a great idea. I thought it invaded people's right to light and privacy, exactly, and that's the purpose of our regulations, is the basis of zoning. I went on and on about Euclidean zoning. So you saw that.
I did.
And so Mr. Fox only objected on the enforceability. He was being practical. I was being idealistic, and there you are. And what we said at the end, if that's... If you have a private agreement with Mr. Whalen, if the applicant has an agreement with Mr. Whalen, so be it. Just don't ask us to make it a condition, and actually, don't tell us about it.
Well, I felt that I heard the Euclidean argument, and I understand that, that is the root of zoning, light and air and the rights to that. But in this particular case, you're talking about apartment units that... This is the living room area, which is facing west. There are balconies off both sides of them, so there's plenty of light and air coming in from those areas. Agreed to, it's quite often part of commercial leases now that you have to have those kinds of lines come down. So I think it's... Again, I'm hoping that the Commission would see it just as a practical solution to a problem between neighbors that they managed to work out, and also, it's a very easy way actually to enforce because you go to the zoning enforcement officer when there's a violation. And you do that kind of thing all the time for neighbors when you talk about lights have to be off at a certain hour in the evening for uses throughout Greenwich. It's quite often a condition that you have, or that there's no parties until a certain time or whatever, or after a certain time. So those are conditions that you regularly place on properties. You do it on rooftops all the time on Greenwich Avenue now, when you have new residential features. So I think it's a reasonable condition to place on the property, and I would ask you to do it. I think it's a lot easier than having...
Tell you what, we're going to leave this open. If the applicant agrees to leaving it open, the applicant is shaking their head, they are...
When is the close?
He wants the applicant would like us to close this. So I've just heard two people say they think it's reasonable. I myself strongly object. I think, as I envision someone telling me that I can't have my living room shades open at night, I react, maybe I want to look out my window at night. I'm paying rent, I live here, I have rights, I should be able to look out my window at night.
And the two examples you gave that I can think of, one was Whitby School, and the other was the Old Greenwich Capital Building on Steamboat, both of which are closed at night, and they have cleaning crew and whatever, so it made sense for those to have the automatic windows and whatnot. These are residential uses, it's very different.
But you're talking about the owner of the property has agreed to...
So why don't you do it with the owner of the property, then?
Well, I should state for the record, because I don't want to delay this on the applicant's part. The applicant has offered also to do it as a private agreement, so...
Perfect.
Okay. However, I wanted to make my point that I think that it is a reasonable condition for the Commission to put on it, and I also think that you should support these kinds of discussions between neighbors and solutions. And unfortunately, I think this kind of undermines that ability to have a future.
Providing for the public health and comfort and general welfare and living conditions, providing for adequate light and air, all of this, if you read the purpose of our regulations, to tell someone they cannot open their shades at night in a residential use to me is a violation of people's rights. If the applicant was willing to leave it open, we could ask our counsel, but since... It's very clear Mr. Luca feels has said the same thing, and we had an extensive discussion about it at the briefing.
And the examples you give, Mr. Haslam, are very distinguishable. The party noise coming from inside the unit is the most closest, but this is shades inside the unit is what someone does inside their own house.
This is a...
In the evening.
Unit that would be... The owner is agreeing to that condition, but I'm not going to continue with it. I get where you are on it.
Got it.
I made the pitch.
You made a good effort.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Fox.
Just be assured that if you ever want to open your shades at night, I will be there to protect your rights.
I'll take down your cell number and give you a call. My life is particularly difficult. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do I have any other public comment? Any other public comment? No. Mr. Hegney. Commissioners, do you have any other comment for Mr. Hegney before he begins to speak? Any questions regarding what you've heard?
Yes, based on what he's about to tell us, I'd like to hear...
That's you sounding like me.
Well, but no. Clearly, there's a problem. You're asking us to vote against our regulations. That's not a great position to be in. Would you have any interest in looking at the second and third floor and removing some of the seven C and replacing it with seven A or seven B? And the number, I don't know the number, but it's the excess of a thousand square feet. So that technically, I think I'm told, that it would fit our regulations at that point. And one suggestion would be, you know, snack bar, the Tom Hegney Memorial Snack Bar. Second and third floor, public access, right, public? The rowers, they get to see the rowers, they get to see the water. I don't know.
Or a shrink.
You solve it, or a shrink.
Or a shrink.
Mr. Yeski, I, I have a response to your question, but I wanna go through a couple of the things that were raised first and, and bring that up ladder in the process.
But you do understand that you're gonna ask us to force a vote against our regulations?
If I maintain the position that I had when I started my comments, yes, I understand that. But I am looking to modify my position. Something along the lines of what you're suggesting, but I, um, let, let me leave that here for now. As was pointed out both by staff and, and the commission, 7A uses in the regulations as revised include public waterfront access subject to Section 6-107G, which requires fifteen feet wide for the accessway for the easement, ten foot wide for the walkway, public and private marinas, and dock, and port facilities. And we're including all of those 7A uses as part of our plan. DEP has commented as no comment, which as we've all realized over the years means that they are saying that they don't have an issue with it being approved. I want to address one thing about the harbor management, commission's notice. I spoke with Matt D'Verna, who is a professional engineer with Race in Stratford. They are our coastal engineering consultant on this. And what he sent to me says, "Per our discussion, I have attached the DEP consultation form that was submitted to the Town of Greenwich Harbor Management Commission on March 25, 2019. We have yet to receive a response back from them." They also send it to the Army Corps of Engineers. They also send it to the Shellfish Commission, they send it to the State Department of Agriculture, so that parties that have any interest in what might be going on, on the water here would have the ability to comment. The 21 slips that we have on our plan are part of what Race is submitting to the state DEP. It is an integral part to our plan, we would not be here but for those. And I would add, having had my boat there in the past, that's about what was there when it was Mackenzie Marine or Albin Marine, when you go back a number of years. It was one long dock on one side and twenty-one boat slips. Race does not see any reason why such an application would be denied by the state at all. The, uh, my, my client is dedicated to rowing. He has a championship rowing program in Westport on the Sawgetuck River. He has a championship rowing program in Rye. He is looking to develop a championship rowing program here in Greenwich. That's what he has been trying to do the last four or five years, and has spent the last three years how he figures out a way of making sure that that rowing program will remain viable and that he can afford to have it prosper. I would add that on the issue of activities, I think Mr. Hardman's questions were, were, were rather appropriate. Bulk of the activity on this site is devoted to the rowing program. That's why we have seventy-eight parking spaces, rather than for the apartments and the marina, twenty-one parking spaces. And that's why we submitted a traffic plan to you, both as part of the plan that was approved three years ago and as a supplemental study to you as part of this plan. That's what drives this, that's what this property is here for, and that's why Mr. Winkelwoss has brought this to you. It's because of the rowing, it's not because of apartments. Apartments are the facility to make the rowing work. Let me just touch on the, the shades. I understand where you're coming from. I made a commitment to Mr. Whalen and to Mr. Hasland that, that we would, we would agree to have this as a condition. My client is going to do this. We, we think it's a matter of privacy too, but it's privacy for those looking out as well as those looking in. Now, let me get to, to the main issue that Mr. Yeski asked me about now. And I have a, a, a plan. I, I suppose Mr. Halper was not quite as confident in my oratory abilities to convince you that we should go with the plan we have. So he has developed a plan that calls for reducing the perimeter of the second and third floors by approximately twenty inches all around. Some of it would be taken up with, uh, with more balconies. Others would be bringing the wall in. The building would continue to look as it does in the rendering. We believe we can do this very easily. That's why he undertook the study that I just handed in to show that you can maintain the integrity of the building, the integrity of the design, and meet the, the commission's determination as to what is permitted in terms of the 7C uses, so that we can maintain the fifteen percent for both the second and third floors as a maximum of a building, of a lot coverage. And with that, we would ask that you approve this so that my client can proceed with building a rowing club.
What are the dimensions of the building, again?
Overall, it's about one hundred and forty by eighty.
I appreciate your, your very literal undertaking of how to reduce the size, twenty inches on every side. So obviously, it works. And I assume that for practical reasons, you'll figure out exactly how to do it. You're not presenting to us how you're going to do it, you're just showing us a literal representation of how to do it.
Yes, and that it maintains the integrity of the building itself.
Correct, okay.
So, there may be areas where we'll make the balconies a bit bigger, so that that's not counted.
Okay, and I was, I, I, I think this demonstrates how the, um, the regulations have allowed, and this is to come up with a practical solution that works. And I think that you should be lauded for all the effort you put in because I think it, it seems to work pretty well. For the record, I think I agree with you as regarding the shades, but that's another matter.
I, I don't want to have my project go down in flames because of shades. I don't have anything further, but we would, we would ask that you do close this tonight and that you do approve it so that we can proceed with-
On this basis.
Yes, on this basis. With developing our construction documents.
And this, this would be a condition that they downsize the building to make the fifteen percent?
Correct.
Yes. Yeah, that's what I'm proposing. And I would thank you.
And, and with the, that you're doing uniformly, almost uniformly around the entire building, so you're not law-
If-
So it stays in proportion?
If I could say that we will maintain the integrity of the design as presented to you.
I think that's the thing I'm having a problem with. I understand, yes, to try to maintain the integrity, but I'm thinking twenty inches all around the building, on, on all sides. I have a feeling that the, the roof line needs to be reviewed or looked at again by the design team.
Yeah, he's a good architect, right?
Because I, I think-
I do too. It's gonna make it a little steeper, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so.
I think it's gonna better.
But it's-
You can't say you don't know, you're the architect.
I know. Okay.
He misspoke.
It's nominally twenty inches all the way around. There may be some areas that are twenty-four inches, there may be some that are fifteen. But we understand the spirit, it's gotta be fifteen percent.
Got it.
We understand that this is the aesthetic that we're after. If for some reason it veers off track because of this shrinkage, we're gonna have to go to ARC, we're gonna have to, but we don't plan on doing that.
I think, I think we've got-
What I would do, given the fact that we've put you through these hoops, would you guys be agreeable that if it gets off track, they only come back to us?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
They can't, I don't, they can't do it at a briefing unless we- Yeah, unless we notice it, but-
But however-
But just come back to us, 'cause you've, we, we recognize that nobody was clear on this, and we, you've gone through a lot of hoops, let's save you that one step if something goes off the rails.
Thank you.
Okay, so just come to us, and, you know, we're easygoing. I always like to get-
Can I have a copy of this transcript?
So, yeah, just come back to us if it's a problem. If it's a minor issue, we could probably set it up for admin review by PNC. Okay? So just to keep it simpler for you. Because the objective here, okay.
Well, and, and we do have to submit the construction documents to staff for their review anyway. That's part of the process of getting a building permit, so.
All right.
But certainly, that would be part of it.
And just don't forget to double-check that sewer thing.
Yes.
And-
Mr. DeAndrea has gone over those numbers.
We'll condition it that you, I'm sure it's all right, but just, just, we'll, we'll also mention that there's, there may be an outstanding sewer comment. And the Andy Fox Memorial Green Strip, the DPW wants-
Or DW approval.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I meant to mention that.
I wasn't gonna forget, Andy was letting it go, but-
I would say, I did look at the plan earlier today. We have an area about fourteen to sixteen feet wide between the sidewalk and our parking lot. So there's plenty of room for us to provide that two feet and also maintain the landscaping that we have proposed.
Okay, great. I mean, 'cause I like the way the grass is-
It will require about a hundred feet, lineal feet-
Yeah.
For, for an easement to the town.
Sidewalk.
'Cause the grasses are a nice softener for the, for the parking lot, it looks good.
Well, this would be between the sidewalk and curb.
Right, right.
Yes. Yep.
You ask one last question?
No. Just kidding.
You're not gonna shrink the first floor, right?
No.
How do you support the second and third? Is, is it gonna be a straight support, or when you shrink that twenty inches?
Oh, it's okay, it's, I mean-
They're gonna rest on a beam?
Well, they already have them on a beam.
Yeah, there's gonna be, there's gonna be beams and some posts on the ground.
He already had a beam underneath the exterior wall, he's moving the beam.
You're really building a plinth, and then you're building a frame structure on top of that plinth.
Okay.
All right. So, any other commission comments on this? Okay, so are you guys okay with closing this as discussed?
I am. Yes.
Everybody's okay with closing, then we'll close this application.
Thank you.
We're leaving.
Yep.
Let's exit this.
Hold on a second, where are you going?
We're at Country Day's next.
Country Day is next, you're right, I'm sorry.
Our next application is Stanwich School, Inc., record owner, and Greenwich Country Day School, Inc. with a final site plan and special permit at 257 Stanwich Road. Ms. Fox, uh, Ms. Goss, you are seated for Mr. Fox, even though I get confused. And with that, hello.
Hello. Evening, Madam Chair.
Good evening, Mr. Cohen.
Bruce Cohen, representing Greenwich Country Day School and the Stanwich School in this continuation of a hearing that is held for the purpose of reviewing the school's applications to permit a new co-ed high school to be located and operated at the site of the Stanwich School at 257 Stanwich Road here in Greenwich. This application represents, as you will remember, a modification of an earlier approval granted to the Stanwich School for the purpose of operating a K through twelve school at, with a cap of seven hundred and fifty kids. This school, as you'll remember, that Greenwich Country Day has proposed is to allow a co-educational high school from grades nine to twelve through twelve with a cap of five hundred and fifty kids and approximately sixty thousand square feet fewer of floor, or less of floor area. At our last hearing, which is held in May the fourteenth, the matter was left open for the applicants to respond to a couple of open issues, which I think has now been done, or at least I hope so. Let me quickly review them. First of all, the ARC has now reviewed and approved the design and almost all of the details of the new school. The landscaping, including the lighting. We're to go back for signage and one fairly small detail. DPW, in a report which I believe was furnished to you today, approved the Greenwich summary report with the customary conditions to be satisfied before the zoning permit is issued. There is construction, as you know, going on based upon prior approvals that were granted. The new water line has been installed to the front of the school. And the major issue that was left open was the issue of traffic. The commission and its traffic consultant, Beta, asked for additional counts to be made and further analysis. That was done by way of a report from Kim Lee Horn. John Canning is here tonight to talk about that, should you have additional questions. That report was approved by the DPW's traffic coordinator, as well as Beta. When I say approved, at, at least they had no further questions or comments. So, rather than reiterate the, the things that you've already heard, we're here tonight with our development team to answer any remaining questions that you may have.
Commissioners, any questions?
Can I speak to Mr. Canning?
Sue?
Mr. Canning.
Mr. Canning.
Can I speak to Mr. Canning?
You want me to wheel him up right away?
Yes, please.
Good evening, members of the board, Mr. McRae.
I read the report.
John Canning. Thank you.
I read the report. Shifting times for the classes, that kind of stuff actually kind of helps. One of the things that we have been discussing and actually talking is that actually, over the course of time, as the school fills up, are we gonna be looking at something that's now more intense, say, in five years, once the school's completely filled? And we have, I guess as part of the master plan, better fields down at the bottom of Stanwich and a full school at the top of Stanwich. You know what I mean? And we're going back and forth. Or will always adjusting times back and forth be the solution? I think one of the biggest questions we had at the previous meeting was actually the long-term solution to the back and forth.
Right. With regard to the question as to will the concentration increase with time at the school, I'm presuming that you mean the Stanwich School on Stanwich Road, because over time, it's expected that the number of students, after the initial absorption of Stanwich students at the Old Church Road, will start to go down. So is, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. When we did our trip projections for the Stanwich Road School with 550 students, we made sure that we used conservative numbers. There were averages, we went above and beyond that, because we didn't want to come back to this commission a year or two from now and have to explain why our numbers were lower. So, we looked, I think, five or six years out, and we used conservative projections, and from that perspective, I think that our numbers are good for the Stanwich School. With regard to the changing of times, stuff happens, right?
Yes.
The classic example is the high school. It really wasn't anticipated, but it happened. So, if other things happen, then it's likely that some changes would have to be made to the schedules, but it's also likely that all of the schools are gonna have to respond if something happens somewhere else, and it's an issue, and, you know, everybody has to be able to get to where they wanna go, and so they make changes as necessary.
So, do you believe that the- have you- is your client moving forward with a plan that all the schools will work together to resolve the traffic in the immediate vicinity should it worsen? Is there some intent to do that? Do you know of that-
Well, I can't speak to-
Okay. So, Mr. Rhodey has said, yes, but if- you'll just wait a second, so, go ahead, Nick, I just wanted to-
I think it was that, that-
Mr. McRae, can you speak up a little bit?
Yes.
Sorry, thank you.
I think as Ms. Albon said, I think it's actually, it's not just the high school, your school, and the lower part of the lower school, it's actually, all of the other institutions that are around there are all contributing. Sure. And I think that's actually, was one of the things we were talking about, is actually, this alley, we have to all work together. One of the things was, you know, the moving of times, would it get to a point where actually, that all of the students come down Stanwich, are on the playing fields, and putting their cleats on, as one of the staff had said, before Greenwich High School gets out? I mean, is that how much flexibility that would have to be built in? Because I think what it is, is that we're trying to anticipate, the school's gonna be full, high school's gonna be full, and it's just, it's just, you know, we need to really anticipate that, and I think, yeah, I think you just said it, is that, yes, your report kind of anticipates the school being full. Did it anticipate actually, yes, what's gonna happen when the school's full, and Greenwich High School and all of that? And were there any suggestions, other than the physical ones that you gave, thank you very much? Or anything else in terms of actually significant changes to the schedules as well? I mean, is it gonna be-
Well, we've already discussed the schedules that we provided to you the last time, but for more, I let Mr. Rhodey speak to that.
I got a couple of questions for you specifically, if you don't mind.
Sure.
But on that topic, I just wanted to just remark on something, just to see if this makes sense to you, maybe you can comment on it. This reorganization of Greenwich Country Day, in some ways, does that kind of dissipate the problem, so it's less concentrated? Or is this expansion bringing more people into the community? I mean, is there some- do you see any kind of balancing that goes on here? How many more people are coming from- because the- say, let's say that the community stays fairly static, it has, the population has stayed, remained basically the same. So, by dispersing the number of students from these locations to another location, does that help any? And you're expanding, you know, you're gonna be 500 people there, but would they be somewhere else in the community, or would most of them, would any number of them be from outside the community now coming into the community? Is there anything that you can tell us about that scenario?
What I can tell you is that the ninth grade in Greenwich Country Day School is moving from Old Church Road up to Stanwich Road, and that lets out in the three- it lets out at four o'clock, which is the busiest hour for the Old Church Road campus. So, by taking that grade and moving it up to Stanwich Road, you will reduce the level of traffic activity somewhat at the Old Church Road campus, but on the other hand, the other grades are increasing approximately to that amount. But in doing so, the lower grades let out earlier, so the reduction will be reduced, but not eliminated. So, from that perspective, it will be beneficial, because the key area is Fairfield Road. Up on Stanwich Road, there's less traffic activity. With regard to other students from- coming in from other locations, I mean, it's really difficult for me to say where these students would go if the spaces in the Stanwich School were not available to them.
As we discussed yesterday, that the net addition, 250 students, if you get to the cap of 550-
Correct.
This existing student population, 300-
Over the historical student population, but it's also a reduction from the approved student population, so it's kind of a-
Right, but we could see an additional 250 students.
Correct.
And you could go to an extreme and say, none of those are coming out of the public school system within Greenwich, so it might be a lot of out-of-town traffic.
22 percent is what-
What's that? 28 percent from out of town, I- something like that, I saw that somewhere, I don't know if I'm making it up.
Well, but then you'd have to cannibalize, though, from Greenwich High School, is my point.
Yeah.
If we didn't think you were gonna cannibalize, then this would all be new-
But-
New traffic.
Regardless, bec- yeah, it flipped off, sorry. But they have an approval for the existing high school. They're reducing the cap, the number, the enrollment there, so versus what we've approved, it's less. The only thing that's worse than what we approved, that is a change that we keep poking at, is the fact that they are, that the new plan involves this back and forth, with the worst intersection being, as we had surmised, Fairfield and Stanwich. I believe that your numbers still don't include the arts, the theater arts?
Well, they do to the extent that we've been advised that the theater is going to operate in the evening, after 6:00 P. M., so-
So, you're assuming that's no traffic now? Let me, not during peak hours, anyway.
Correct.
I have this back of my mind concern that on a slippery snowy night in February, it's not a great idea to be bringing kids back and forth to go to the gym, but that's always been the driver here, but that's not your job. So, on your job, you say the incremental trips per hour at their max is gonna be no more than 40.
Correct.
As I go through, and you know I'm not good at synchro, but as I go through the synchro-
Yes.
That can be up to 30 percent of the traffic that's there, it's anywhere from a 10 percent increase, because you have, as I look at the synchro numbers-
Yep.
At certain times, I couldn't, I couldn't find an overlap for your less than 40, 37 plus, and the synchro, but basically, it's, if I look at the synchro, it can be 10 to 30 percent increase, is someone giving me the numbers? 10 to 30 percent increase in the volume that's at that intersection, is that correct?
I'm going to go, do I have-
Well, I think that, you know, when you say, let me make the point-
I think, I think there's at least 500 vehicles per hour through the busiest intersections, and 10 percent of that is 50, and 30 is less, 40 is less than-
So, it's 8 percent. That's still a significant increase in your hourly traffic at peak time. You guys are managing it.
Mm-hmm.
Because of your doing this times, and you've actually, we will, I'm not sure how we go about this question of, the roundabout seems to be, a roundabout in the future would be a great plan, is from what I looked at your numbers.
Sure.
What there's indicating, of the three options you give, that's the one that gives you the best resolution.
From a traffic perspective, it's very acceptable.
And I think that's more acceptable to people, to residents than a light, but when you minimize the impact, you're still talking about a pretty significant increase in traffic that's attributed, and this is what our concern has been all along. You alone are responsible for, sorry.
That's okay.
Mr. Rhodey alone-
I'm used to this.
Is responsible for an 8 percent increase in traffic at an intersection that's already L O S F.
Can I interrupt you there for one moment?
Of course.
Thank you. So, the 37 is right at Cardinal Road, at the Cardinal Road Fields.
Okay.
So, when you get over to Stanwich Road, and if you looked at figures 8A and 8P-
Yes, I'm look- I've got them in front of me, yes.
Okay, so there's actually a reduction on the through volumes there, so the net increase at the, at the intersection of Stanwich Road with Fairfield Road is not 37, I think it's-
Because the traffic's so bad that you can't get through?
No.
Oh, sorry.
It's, it's, people, it's two things. First of all, that's in the afternoon peak hour, when you have the 37, because the students are going either to the fields, or perhaps they're going from one campus to the other.
Right.
But in that peak hour, the high school actually doesn't generate as much traffic-
Saw that.
As the old Stanwich School, K through-
Right.
12 did at that peak hour. We're looking at that peak hour because that's driven actually by the combination of the Greenwich High School and the Greenwich Middle School, which finish at, I think it's 2:30 and 2:45, or something like that. And that's, that was the busiest time for the Stanwich School also, but the high school has activities up until later on.
Still looking at a significant, in my mind, anything over 5 percent is a significant number, because that's how, Dennis isn't here, that's how you view something being significant when you do business analysis, so I'm carrying it on to traffic. 5 percent is a significant increase. Therefore, you are impacting the traffic. This idea of the back and forth in perpetuity is really just not brilliant, okay?
But I think we, I think we heard last time that the mitigant, potentially, would be a new athletic facility at this site, but you, nothing you can guarantee at this time, but let me just, if you don't mind-
But he's traffic, so he can't talk about athletic facilities.
No, 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 you know, if we remove that back and forth component, which I think is kind of the nut of the matter, then we'd be almost back to status quo, it sounds like.
So-
Yes, I guess if you could remove that back and forth.
So, I'm almost done, Mr. Rhodey, and then you can. So, bottom line, the two things really is, well, several things. One is a coordination with the schools, when there's a change in how anybody operates, the schools are gonna have to work it out together, and that, that's not something we can impose a condition on one school, we have to kind of have that dialogue with people, and get that going. The second thing is how we do something about improving the traffic at that intersection that is so bad, because we need to go to the town, and we need to act on that, because to that extent, we wanna be supportive of the schools, and I think you're saying, you don't actually come out and recommend, but you give us the three alternatives, and looking at the change in the level of service, the roundabout's the best, yes?
So, let me just recap what the level of service was for Stanwich Road.
Sue, it's on page four of your report at the bottom.
Yep.
It's the far-right column.
Yep, it was the best.
And it's the best, right?
Yes, yes.
Um-
So, I would just, I'd like to say, I guess, a couple of things.
Yes, sir.
Roundabouts often depend on right-of-way, so if you can figure out the right-of-way, that's a great thing.
Yes.
And the existing condition is driven by all of the schools and everybody else that drives through that intersection.
Very busy intersection.
And I'm not going to speak for Mr. Rhodey, but if I were, I guess he would be interested in working with the various other institutions in the area to improve conditions.
Yeah.
But you can ask Mr. Rhodey yourself.
Yeah, and so, and then the last thing that I just wanted to say to you is, just as a comment, you mentioned that Stanwich School and Greenwich Country Day have generated traffic volumes on these roadways for decades, yeah, but not to go to the gym, which is what's been bothering us, been bothering me, anyway. So, just to me, that it's the change in circumstances that we were concerned about, because we do know that this is a busy. So, you anticipate that, I think at this point, I would talk to Mr. Rhodey, because now it comes to how he, the school will address if something goes haywire.
Right, okay.
Does any-
Go ahead, Mr. McRae.
Just a quick question, just in aside, because I wanna make sure, I wanna be clear on this. Understanding the roundabouts and the physical limitations of that-
Yep.
That actually creates the best situation, but there would be, in a sense, in terms of the table, three, three, one of each, each one of those intersections, the three intersections, Stanwich and Fairfield, the hillside and Fairfield, Old Church and Fairfield.
Yes.
So, three, okay. The traffic signalization is not as good, but doesn't have the incredible physical limitations that the roundabouts do.
Traffic signals can fit in smaller spaces than roundabouts, that's the question.
They also, I think, this is my real question, is that they actually can be adjusted and timed and altered, if need be, to address any kind of a significant change in traffic in other direction.
They can, but my experience is a roundabout kind of automatically does that-
Oh, yeah, I agree with you.
Almost as good. What I will say is, traffic signals gives you better control for pedestrians crossing at intersections, because you can put in signalized crosswalks with push buttons, and at roundabouts, you basically have to cross one approach or one moving lane at a time.
We need to build more sidewalks first.
The problem with the roundabout there is you'd have to take some land, because there's just not enough space.
It's tiny, that's a very small area.
Because we did talk, we have talked to them about that.
Yeah, it's the physical limitation of actually putting in such a large structure, as opposed to a traffic signalization system, which would work, but it's that, still be adjustable, so.
Right.
Okay, I think I kind of answered my question, so.
Thank you, and I just would like to remind the board that the school has committed to having a policy that students can't drive to the athletic fields, and so, that continues their effort to minimize their impact.
You opened your letter with that, we did see it.
Sorry, thank you.
Quick, quick traffic question.
I'm sorry, Mr. Canning.
And I apologize if this has been covered, but the, the original approval for the school, for the Stanwich School, had a turn lane that was going to be created at some point in time, what is the story with-
I believe the turn lane is-
It's almost built, it's been done.
Okay, so that's, okay, super.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Adam Rhodey, R O H D I E, Madam Chairperson and the board, good to see you again, thanks for having us.
Anybody got any questions right now? No?
Do you want me to work back from the questions that I heard Mr. McRae say, so, and Mr. Hardman?
I think, actually, just one that you can address, you go through what you're gonna talk about, but actually, what I would like to know is, is in terms of a longer-term plan at the northern side, at the new high school site, in terms of consolidating your uses down below, in the south, up there, i.e. if you could create more playing surfaces, create a gym, those kind of things, I think we were talking about a master plan, what came back to me and what I was reading is that the real master plan is actually approving the fields down below at this, in the south, so I was looking for something different, so. Go ahead, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. I could stipulate to you right now that it would be our goal to have gymnasiums, whether it was a hockey rink or a natatorium on the Stanwich Road property. Two factors have to make that happen, one is land, and the other is money, but I do actually believe both of those are gonna become available over time, and what that time factor is, I couldn't stipulate to that, but what I could tell you is, we're actively in conversations with contiguous land, and if we're able to acquire some contiguous land, it gives us greater opportunity to solve for exactly what you're talking about, and that, that's what's best for the high school programming, so that we can have a gym on campus, and kids can be there during periods, so we would love to get to that. We have, the question came up about sort of working with other schools. We actually believe we could be the most flexible in working with other schools. The town of Greenwich, who we find ourselves to be terrific partners with, are a little bit hamstrung by the bureaucracy of the state and the town of how they solve for- bit hamstrung by the bureaucracy of the state and the town, of how they solve for start times and dismissal times. We don't have that handcuff, which puts us in a great position. And we are willing, and are pragmatic enough to say, if traffic is a disaster, we're happy to reassess, rethink about start times, rethink about dismissal times, to help mitigate that, that problem. I'd love to work with the folks at Central, I'd love to work with the folks at the high school. Frankly, it's been harder, because we'd love to work on town busing, and we talked about this last time, it's, it's less than, it's kind of suboptimal to try to work with the town on, on creating a busing plan that works with the independent schools and the public schools. We will continue to try to do that, and we are moving towards more private busing on our own. We'll offer our fourth new bus, starting next year. I did mention to you last time here, that we would be investing in a system to help with drop-off and pickup, we've now entered into that contract, we're trenching to put the cameras on our campus, they'll be up in September, these are license plate reading cameras, they read the license plates as the cam, cars come on campus, they ping into the classrooms of the children of the second grader, the second graders let out, mom drives up, they're put right into the car, they, they at least purport to have a fifteen to thirty percent increase in the traffic movement on your campus. Huge investment on our part, but we're, we want to do it, we want to do anything we can to get the traffic off the roads. You asked a question, Councilman Hardman, about the, sort of the, where do our kids come from? Greenwich Country Day is eighty-five percent kids from Greenwich today. Matter of fact, eighty-five percent of the kids at Greenwich Country Day live within seven miles of the school. And so, we are hugely a Greenwich school, we take nine hundred, or eight hundred and change, children out of the public schools, and we are, as we grow our high school, we'll clearly have some broader catchment area, we'll have some kids coming from further away, but we still will be an inherently Greenwich school. As we think of our children who are now in second grade, who will ultimately be high school kids, eighty percent of those children are currently in, in residence from, within seven miles of our school.
I think what confused us is that, when we asked you about the seniors and the juniors driving, you said that if they were from Rye, the assumption sounded as if, it sounded as if you were assuming they would be from outside of town.
Fair.
And that was your reason for allowing them to drive, is they might be, and you use Rye as an example, so, that was your justification for having the seniors drive, themselves, at the time?
Part of the justification, I think the biggest justification is, what John Canning talked to you about, is the, the two trips versus four trips. Again, it feels environmentally better, and traffic better, to have children drive onto campus, park their car, and then drive home, at the end of the day, no open campus, which we've also stipulated here to this group, versus mom or nanny dropping them off, driving out, coming back in, and driving out again, for four trips versus two trips. We do anticipate we'll get kids from Rye, we'll get a couple of kids from Norwalk, we'll get kids from Stanford, that will happen, but we don't anticipate that half of the kids are gonna be coming from outside the Greenwich borders. Thirty, forty years from now, I can't tell you what it's gonna look like, but I would still anticipate us being a Greenwich-centric school.
As long as you've touched on the, on the conservation and environment issue, we met with Aquarian last week, as we were working on the long-range plan for the town, and one of the things that they suggested is that we actively encourage the schools to find ways to conserve water, and I don't know if the state allows you to use, I don't understand the gray water regulations very well-
Sure.
But to, wherever possible, would you have any objection of us asking you to do, to consider that, in a decision letter, that we send you, that we would say, I mean, it wouldn't be any kind of condition, we would just say we-
Sure, no, no problem.
In the interest of water conservation, we would encourage you.
Yeah, no problem at all, and again, just to refresh your memory, we feel like we're leading the way in that area, there is gray water capture in the new plans that we have, there are waterless urinals in the new plan that we have, we will continue to work with you guys with Inland Wetlands, to think about rain gardens, which are also part of this, of our planning going forward, so absolutely no problem there. I think you'll see some of that already built into the, to the design.
Okay.
Could I, yeah, go ahead.
I just ask one question, going back to, in the past, your graduating classes, how many of them have gone to Greenwich High School? I know there's substantial number, but just order of magnitude.
So, when you say our graduating class, you're talking about our ninth graders.
Yeah.
And so, typically, over my fifteen years, about one-third of the students who graduate out of our ninth grade went to boarding school, about one-third, roughly, went to other independent schools in the area, the Brunswick's, the GAs, the Kings, Rye Country Day, and then about a third went to Greenwich High School. That's been our historical averages.
And I just wondered, in your traffic study, could that have been sort of an alternate scenario? In essence, the traffic might not be, you know, Margarita, might not be an additional five percent, it could, could be a smaller number.
It could be, and, and even then, I was just kind of, it was just a wag on my part.
Ms. Albin, can I make one other comment?
Yes, sir.
Just, the question about the back and forth, I don't mean to underestimate that, but I also think potentially we're overestimating that. The back and forth between the two campuses, in a lot of these scenarios, is gonna happen in way off-peak times.
Right.
I mean, it's nighttime, you, you mentioned our performing arts, the performing arts, if, if that happens, is evening performances, evening rehearsals, we're not gonna be bringing them at two-forty-five, while Central is dismissing. Our program, even at the, at the high school on Stanwich Road, wouldn't even be ending at that point. So, basketball practices for our varsity teams run six to eight o'clock, I don't anticipate that, and that's John's area, but I would tell you, I'm worried that we're overestimating the impact there.
But that is better to, to be generous, because we've found over and over again that people tend to underestimate the parking demand, and people tend to underestimate the traffic issues, and it is a consistent complaint from residents.
Sure.
So, that's what, you know, so we have to try and poke it, and see if we can make it better, because that is the ongoing, if you go and ask your average resident, that's one of the first things they're gonna tell you they hate.
And I hope that we'd be able to tell our average resident that the Stanwich School, permitted by you all here, at seven-hundred-and-fifty students-
Gotcha.
With, and that, that raises the faculty number to two-fifty, is way lower than what we're asking you all to permit.
The new school is way lower, and that was what I said to Dave, what is, the only thing that is a greater impact on the town, is the fact that you're going back and forth, because that your actual enrollment is gonna be lower, as you're projecting it, maybe. You'll never know what can happen, but at this point, you're projecting it.
Well, we're also willing to be subject to a cap, five-fifty on the campus.
And that you would come back, if, if you had the good fortune to exceed, to think you were exceeding the cap, you would come back.
Agreed, but I also believe, educationally, now the next headmaster down the road may disagree, but educationally, there's a, there's a strong educational argument why we feel four-hundred, four-twenty-five feels like the right number for kids, it allows us to do different things educationally, than when you have a high school of five-hundred or six-hundred kids.
And your kids don't get lost.
Exactly.
Does anybody have any more questions? I know you've got some minor stuff to address with ARC, I'm pretty much done, does anybody else have anything? Victoria, Nick?
Do you want to talk about the, the traffic?
Yeah, I, I didn't know how to approach it, but you wanna give it a shot?
Mr. Cohen, Mr. Canning.
Monitoring on an ongoing basis.
One of the things we talked about in our discussion, again, that whole thing of actually, the school, starting out with one class, one full class, and then follow-up means over the, over the course of a time. One of the things we had discussed, maybe an option, is to actually monitor the traffic situations.
Turn the back on. Over the next couple of years, to understand, to make sure that actually what we're doing now is actually working, or if it's not working, we try to make some adjustments, whether it's start times, insist on the signalization, whatever it is. I think one of the things it came down to was that, looking at the, the traffic volumes and the intersections between the, the two sites, I do it almost like on a yearly basis, so we can get a really good sense of, of the figures, until, we do that until actually the school is at its complete capacity, with the, like, five years, when all of the seniors are there, you know, and they're, we're in complete operation with a full attendance.
Following the build-out.
Yeah, yeah, and I think that's one of the things to understand, that yes, we're making assumptions now, we've got the studies, Mr. Canning's actually really sharpened the pencil on the numbers, but understanding, yes, it's affecting you guys, and a lot of other people at the same time, can we do something to take a look at this long-term, see it, and fix it if it's not right?
We heard that comment at the staff briefing yesterday, and when we did, I spoke to Adam about it, and he's got no problem about a post-construction monitoring situation, and then, we, if, we file it with staff, if there were something that, if we weren't doing what we thought we were gonna do, we'd come back to the commission with some suggestions about how to remediate. The, the only question is, when you talk about annual, A, that's quite an expense, and B, during construction, I'm not quite sure how we would get that done.
Right, I, I think it's actually, kind of working out the detail of that, so we can get the proper numbers, and, and how we would go about that.
A general condition about, you know, post-construction traffic study is acceptable to the school.
Right, because I think actually, to provide information for it, for the administration, and to understand actually what's really happening from both sides, the schools administration, the public schools administration, to really say, yes, these are what's, this is what's happening in the streets, and everybody needs to kind of come to the table and fix this.
It's acceptable.
So.
Okay, so, you're suggesting post-a-year, I don't know, what kind of timeframe would be reasonable, because you want to have some sort of critical mass of the students in the high school, you want to have the programs be going?
What we've done in the past is, in similar situations, is a year after construction is complete.
Okay.
And then, if, if the commission wants something, you know, during construction, if we could work something out with the staff.
Does that, does that make sense, though, because you won't be at, near full capacity at that point?
That's what I'm thinking.
So, what if it was like eighty-five percent of the cap, or something?
I think it's gotta be-
When you get to eighty-five percent of the cap, in terms of students.
It's gotta be at a critical mass, you've gotta have enough kids that you could really be impacting.
That's okay, I saw Adam shake, is that, yes, that's fine.
Yeah, I mean, just, because otherwise, it doesn't make sense, if you've only got-
That's fine.
And it won't make it as onerous, because it'll take you a while, well, it may take you a while to get there.
Not, not to say that that's not the right idea, but, you know, we're looking at, technically, we're looking at four years out from, from completion, because once all the Country Day students are actually matriculating into the high school program, that's, that's the first wave, so to speak, of traffic impact, so-
It's true.
Do we want to know, just for, even for historical knowledge, you want a baseline of what it's like then, and then another eighty-five percent, because I don't know how quickly we're gonna get eighty-five percent.
Right, I think that was my, 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 my tent was actually to look at it as the school population grows, post-construction, because I think if we're, everything's working out really well, then we're good to go, but if we're seeing a, a trend where things are starting to fail, we need to get to it, you know, quickly, as opposed to wait till it completely fails, and then fix it.
Well, having said that, I mean, the Stanwich School approval for more kids involved the, the right turn lane, or left, left turn lane, whatever it is, but the additional turn lane, which they're constructing now, so they've already put in the traffic improvement that was supposed to be for the additional kids that were more, so-
Right, I think, I think what, but the study I was looking for, what I was really looking for, is actually the intersections between Old Church Road and-
Oh, I see, right.
And Upper Stanwich, because I want to make sure that actually, like you said, the, the back and forth kind of thing, or even the interaction between Central to high school, you know, those kind of things, where we have all of those vehicles traveling through all of that, how is it actually being affected, and one year after construction, two years after, to see, to make sure that we're actually working in this, so we're not seeing an instant trend.
Well, I think if we incorporate the sort of number of students that, you know, wouldn't have gone to GHS, you know, we'll get a little bit, we might get some, some break from the traffic study.
Might offer an idea, that, we open in September with one-hundred-and-eighty-five children, give or take, in September of two thousand and twenty, we'll have two-hundred-and-eighty-five, and in two thousand and twenty-one, we'll have three-hundred-and-eighty-five. Three-hundred-and-eighty-five gets you to about the eighty percentage mark, and that might be the right time, it would be where our Phase Two construction, most of it would open, and it would give you a pretty good reading of how traffic is impacted in the areas that you're concerned with.
That was the, the fall of twenty twenty-one?
Fall of twenty twenty-one.
If it's approved, I'll still give you, otherwise, whatever else you want.
Does that sound all right?
Yes, I think that works, that's what we were trying to get to, is, once it's at a critical mass, because initially, you know, you're not even gonna have great teams in the beginning.
Could, could I just remind the commission, there were three conditions that were placed on the seven-fifty approval, that we would ask you to modify. One is the seven-fifty down to five-fifty, the second one is no student driving, we want the ability to have a hundred-and-fifty student parking places, and the third is no summer programs, we'd like to have school-related and school-sponsored programs only. Don't make a face, Ms. Albin.
Well-
It's a good thing.
You haven't mentioned it before.
Well, it's all over the papers, it's a part of our application.
But it's school-related, so you, like, would you rent that out to camps or something?
No.
Or you mean literally only the students of Greenwich Country Day School?
Correct. That's correct.
Oh, okay.
Is that academic and-
Athletic.
Athletic, and what, is that?
For school, for the kids, for the, for the G-
Okay, no outsiders.
No rental, no outsiders.
Okay.
But if the town wanted you to consider that, just for the sake of argument, that, presumably, that conversation would be had, and then you would come back to the commission.
What I'm only saying is-
If the town wanted us?
Yeah, like, well, I know there's like youth lacrosse leagues that have played there in the past, and, you know-
Oh, you mean, a town sponsored group?
Right.
We'd have to come back to the commission.
Right, you know, I know that that's happened in the past, and it's obviously a lovely facility, the field and whatever, and there's a shortage of playing fields.
And we'd be open to it if, if the commission said okay.
Mr. Cohen, that, those, those three issues, actually, that was in your initial narrative, correct, correct?
I'm sorry.
That the, those three issues were in your initial narrative?
I had forgotten.
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else?
Thank you.
So, I'm sorry, one quick question, Mr. Cohen, I'm sorry.
Turn back, Mr. Cohen.
When, when is the wastewater treatment plant, what's the status of that?
That's in the Phase, Phase One, right now, which is part of the site work.
Okay, great.
The sterilization September.
And so, just to Ms. Albin's point, because that, there's, just like at Brunswick, there's water that you can use from that facility, right, that you could use for landscaping and that kind of thing?
Yes.
So, that's gonna be taken?
There's reuse of the gray water, recirculation.
Just, we're gonna put that in.
It's a, it's a terrific system.
Right, thank you.
Okay, so, would everybody be okay with closing this item?
Yes.
Okay, then we will close it. Oh, I'm sorry, we need to grab our missing members, I was just moving along.
Any care about the usual suspects?
No, thanks. Katie, you can help.
They'll see him.
You know, in my, I once lived in a neighborhood where you weren't allowed to put sheets over your windows, that would be a little bit like having to draw your shades, right? But it was just squirrely, it's squirrely. Oh, so you gave us the decision letter?
Yeah, it was in the package.
Okay, only you, you need to use a ruler when you underline, Mr. Haslam?
I wasn't sure if it was trying to reach her down.
Oh.
No, I don't think-
No, I don't think he was.
So what we'd really like you to do is to propose a bowling alley?
Where's our new member?
He's home, because we couldn't send him the agenda, because he wasn't a member in time to get the agenda. And I said, hey, you make the decision if you want to show up without having read the agenda, because it's going to be the last time you can hang out at home on a Tuesday night. I imagine it's not fair to you, to ask you to sit at the desk if you haven't read the material. The school should put it back, come in and got it.
Mr. Haslam?
Thank you.
Are you underlining or crossing out in the decision?
I'm underlining. I'm highlighting.
We're going to buy you a ruler.
Good evening again. Chip Haslam from Johnson, Haslam, and Hoagman for the applicant. With me tonight is Marcy Fagan over here, who is principal in Paradigm, and Bernie Adler, who you all know as a traffic and parking consultant. I just wanted, before I got into the meat of this, to just clear up, I think, some misunderstandings from, in the staff notes and also the briefing yesterday. There was an earlier application that was made to do two things. One was to request that that area on the left that you see as being space available. The area on the left that you see as being space available, be granted a special permit for restaurant use. Restaurant use is permitted in the zone as a ground floor use with a special permit. That application has been withdrawn, so there's no application before you with regard to any restaurants. Okay. Well, it wasn't clear from the staff notes. It seemed like there was some confusion. Or that we are seeking to put a restaurant use in the other twenty-six-hundred-square-foot area. Okay, again, that was in the staff notes as being, okay. So there's no restaurant use proposed whatsoever. The only issue really before you is there was a condition placed upon nineteen ninety-five approval that the twenty-six-hundred-square-feet space we're talking about be used for, use groups permitted on a ground floor use only, or ground floor only. And what we're asking is relief from that condition. And now I'll get into the meat of this discussion and my argument as to why I think that should be granted.
But the nuts and bolts of your request is that you would like to be this, maybe a ground floor and maybe a second floor, depending?
No. And again, that's also, I think, incorrect, both from the staff notes and briefing. We're only asking that it be designated now as being a second floor use. And second floor use is permitted. That's it. Not ground floor uses, just second floor uses. And that would still permit a retail use, because in this particular zone, retail's permitted on the second floor. But the second part of this application is we have a particular use that is currently proposed, going from what was previously retail, so there'd be a change in use, to a group fitness center, which is not permitted on the ground floor in the CGBR. It's permitted in all your other business zones other than the WB and the BEX fifty. And I would say to you that I think this particular location and property is more akin to the LBR zones than it is to the CGBR, because it's not on Greenwich Avenue. It's not fronting directly on the street as the other ones are directly to the east on West Putnam Avenue. You have a GBO zone directly to the west on West Putnam Avenue. You have parking in the front of the building, which, so the building is significantly set back from the street. And it doesn't interfere then with the streetscape or the feeling of retail being continuous across that portion of West Putnam Avenue. And in fact, the applicant has had difficulty in the past years renting this space. And she hasn't, it's been vacant for three and a half years. So in fact, as a practical matter, the continuity of streetscape or storefronts on this particular area has been interrupted by this vacancy, as well as the one next to it. The background of this building is that it was the Pickwick Theater originally. It was built in nineteen twenty-nine, or opened in nineteen twenty-nine, and actually have a New York Times. Well, I thought it, any event. According to the New York Times, when it opened, it, the first seating was two thousand people at this location. So it was quite an expansive theater. It subsequently turned into a bowling alley. I remember it well, because I played in a league there for many years in the late eighties, early nineties. And there was purportedly to the ninety-five decision fifty lanes. I remember it as being fifty-four lanes. But in any event, on league night, you would have four people per lane. You'd play another team in the lane next to you. So you're talking about two hundred people that would show up to bowl at this particular location. So, yep.
What was the name of that bowling team? Because I really like the name of the bowling team.
It was my former law firm, and our team's name was Motion to Strike. So, thank you, Katie. We had uniforms and everything, but, yeah. But in any event, you can see why the commission might have seen the application before them in nineteen ninety-five very favorably, because the applicant agreed to mothball considerable part of the building and have it occupied, and to actually add twenty-four parking spaces to what was currently there. So it made the property much more non-conforming than had previously been the case. And in fact, to this day, as you can see from Mr. Adler's traffic study, there is ample parking for the uses that are currently on the property. And in fact, Marcy has had a parking attendant, if you ever go into Gerlicka Herb's or one of the stores, or FedEx, whatever, there's a parking attendant to make sure that people aren't parking on the property to go over the library or to use restaurants, et cetera. So the property functions very well, and as I would say, a lot less intensively than it did when it was either the theater or the bowling alley. So what we're asking for is to have this particular space, which I know there's some umbrage taken with the characterization of it as the mezzanine, but in fact, that's the language that the commission used in the nineteen ninety-five decision, and indicated that the mezzanine space, which incorporates this twenty-six-hundred square feet, shall be considered part of the ground floor level for use purposes, and that was in condition number seven. And as I say, it's been very difficult to get this space let. By having it made a second floor use or uses, it would allow the use that we're proposing tonight, as well as some office use, such as the Fidelity use, which is right next door, which was approved by stipulation with the commission back in nineteen ninety-seven, and again, has maintained, I think, the continuity of a storefront, even though it is an office use. So, in fact, of this whole mezzanine space, only twenty percent of it is this twenty-six-hundred. The rest is the other uses. But it gives flexibility where there currently isn't. I'd also say, as a matter of its appearance, when you look at the regulations, it talks about a ground floor use being within eighteen inches of grade. Here we're talking about, back. You're talking about eight to ten feet above the grade where this mezzanine portion is and where the doorway is, as well as about fourteen steps up from grade. So it's considerably higher than grade. And I would say to you that, again, of the regulations, it's kind of implied that this would be considered other than a ground floor use. I think the intent at the commission at the time of approval back in ninety-five was, again, to maintain the streetscape or the storefronts and.
Retail continuity.
Retail continuity.
That is the intent of the CGBR regulations. But let me just stop you since I interrupt. When you contemplate changing these uses, if you went to second floor uses here, would you also be considering use group three?
You could.
So just so the commission knows, that would be residential.
Yes, and in fact, we've looked at.
As a six-one-ten, as a moderate income use. I mean, just saying that that's what they're asking for. They're asking not only to do a fitness use, but to do another office use, which in the intent of the regulations would break the retail continuity.
Well, we would agree, however, to, if we had another change of use. So we have the group fitness come in now, and you usually require us to come back to you if there's a change of use or different use groups, even the same use group, if it affects parking and things like that in nature. So we would agree if it would, to go to an office use, to come back before the commission to address those issues. I would hope that if it would convert back to a retail use, it would not be an issue. But again, we would agree to come back into the commission. But I think we need to establish that you can have second floor uses within this twenty-six-hundred square feet. I don't think there's any expectation on my client's part that this would be used for residential purposes, this twenty-six-hundred square feet. It doesn't really lend itself readily to that kind of use. However, we have looked at, and in fact, she invaded, she invited the zoning director over to look at the other unoccupied spaces that were mothballed for possible residential uses in the future. And in fact, there was an approval that was given a few years ago to create residential use up there, which has not been, has not been used. But there were prior approvals for that, for that purpose. And I'm just talking tonight about this twenty-six-hundred square feet. I think there's other concepts or things that might work out on the site, but for this particular use.
And why not, wouldn't they have been able to just get a use variance? And get the gym that way?
I don't know how you'd do that, because you'd have to, again, show some sort of legal hardship that's.
Obviously, every site is different, but that was tried where the Asiana restaurant was, that building on the way on the other side of the CGBR.
Right.
And that was denied. And then they came before this commission and asked for a change having to do with basement uses, actually.
Which was granted, right.
Yeah.
And I tried to find that today, because that section, though, of East Putnam Avenue is, as you know, that and Cos Cob, you get deferred over to Cos Cob when you put in that, that section. So we had difficulty finding that particular approval. But yes, that's my understanding of what happened there. It got denied by the ZBA, came to P&amp;Z, and P&amp;Z approved that lower-level use behind Asiana.
Through a regulation change, actually.
Was that, okay, I didn't realize that. That's what I was looking for, Katie, I didn't find it. But I don't think you need to do that here, because here it's just a condition of the nineteen ninety-five approval, which doesn't seem to have any logic behind it because of the relationship between this mezzanine section and the ground floor. The only logic I can see, as I say, is the maintenance of the continuity. But again, I think this is a unique property, because it's set back from the street. You have the parking in front of it. It's not, it's differentiated from the streetscape, which is immediately to the east, and the GBO zone, which is immediately to the west.
But the thing is, the retail continuity, sorry, Katie, retail continuity. Just to the right there, you've got a retail shop that you walk up to that has done fine.
That's, to the right is actually Fidelity Investments.
Roundabout?
Just to the left.
No.
Roundabout moved about three or four years ago. Roundabout's to the left.
Mr. Haslam, this might be going down the rabbit hole, but I just wanted to ask you, if the mezzanine becomes a second floor, then above that is a third floor.
The third floor is mothballed as a condition of the nineteen ninety-five approval, but for thirty-one-hundred square feet of storage space, and that's it. So they basically gave up, I think it was sixteen thousand square feet, of space that is mothballed. And we're not asking for relief from that condition. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
Does anybody have any questions?
Mr. Haslam, the, I guess it's an issue that the, these particular storefronts are hard to rent. That's what we're really looking at. And because they're set back, they're up steps, that kind of thing.
Correct.
Okay. You have a, you have two tenants now, the Fidelity and FedEx.
And Gerlick.
And the Shade Store.
And the Shade Store.
And Roundabout.
Is Roundabout there, still there?
They've moved locations.
Okay, but they're still there. Oh, they're still there.
Roundabout's on the left.
Got it.
It's like to the right of Gerlick, and it's to the left of this photo here.
Okay, so that would say that they didn't want to have the steps.
No, it's to the right. Roundabout was to the right.
Roundabout used to be to the right. They moved, so they're to the left. They moved about three or four years ago.
So that's Roundabout, that's FedEx. This is the opening space.
I'm sorry.
Are you on the wrong application?
And this is the area we're talking about right here. Fidelity's over here. Gerlick and Herb's over here, Shade Store's over here.
My thought was actually, it sounds like it's a retail marketing issue.
No, and we need to do that next.
Here, it's buried deep into the site, the rough steps. And it's more, you're trying to kind of create a situation where it's actually more convenient for people to use a retail space. Was any consideration given to actually moving, say, moving FedEx, which is more of a destination, up onto the mezzanine? Or moving the retail spaces around so the more convenient storefronts are available lower down towards the parking lot?
I haven't talked to Marcy about it. Marcy, do you want to just have?
They wouldn't go off.
Marcy Fagan.
Hi. FedEx wouldn't locate that. Oh, sorry. Okay, how's that? FedEx wouldn't take space up fourteen steps. They get so many deliveries, so many boxes, you know, so many things in and out every day. So it's really difficult to find a tenant who, you know, wants to be up fourteen steps. Things like fitness, you know, hair salons, nail salons, things that are very destination, seem able to deal with it. But any type of tenant who is relying more on, you know, traffic coming and going, people walking by, you know, people going into Gerlick and Herb and stopping in, the steps are a real impediment to customers going up there. So it makes it, you know, it's second floor space. So it is what it is, and the fourteen steps make it really difficult.
Go ahead, Indy.
How do you deal with ADA?
We have, in the, underneath, if you can see.
Yeah.
There's a terrace. We have parking underneath. And if anyone's going to that second floor space, they can go under the garage. And we have a passenger elevator at the back of the garage, and they can go up the back. So we do have an ADA entrance, if it's necessary.
That's actually in the Fidelity space?
No, it's at the back of the garage, and it goes up to a common hallway that allows you to enter into the Fidelity space, and also allows you to enter into the vacant space. There's kind of, it's kind of a common hallway that wraps around the back of the building.
So if you had a fitness use, my quick math is that you would need an extra twenty, twenty-five parking spaces than you do for an office use. I'm doing, you need about sixty square feet, maybe, for a piece of exercise equipment. You have twenty-two hundred, and that's generous, I think. You, you have twenty-two hundred square feet, you'd have to have an office, other stuff. But somewhere in there, you're going to need a lot more parking. This lot, I guess people can park in the garage, but nobody does.
A lot of, some people do. People going to Fidelity park in the garage.
The employees do.
The employees park in the garage.
But the surface lot is often full in the middle of the day.
The surface lot is very empty until about ten-thirty, eleven.
Middle of the day, it's full.
And then from like eleven-thirty to one-thirty or two, it's very busy, which is why I keep a parking attendant there full-time.
Right, who makes sure that you're actually using the businesses there.
Right, right. It's a terrible job. People are so mean to him.
Yeah, because you, if you go to Fidelity and then you're walking out, he says, you can't do that. So it must be a terrible job.
It is a terrible job.
But you would need that extra parking, and you, in the middle of the day.
Well, the.
Because it does fill up.
The fitness use that we're proposing, I actually have a tenant who we're trying to get approval for. They would limit their classes from five to eight in the morning to twenty-five. They wouldn't have any classes between eleven-thirty and one-thirty. And then, and if they, and then from then on, any classes they had would be limited to fifteen.
The problem with that is if that fitness use goes away and somebody new comes in, and we don't know about it, which happens a lot of the time. Somebody new just rents a space, we don't know that it's changed. Now there's not enough parking, because nobody told them. I can tell you in Old Greenwich, we just had that with a Pilates place that just decided to set up shop. And there wasn't enough parking. That's, so that's a concern. I'm not saying we can't work it out, but.
Yeah. It's a concern of mine, too, because the last thing.
You lose the businesses.
Yeah, I mean, I keep my tenants, I mean, of the tenants that are there, the five tenants, four of them have been there for twenty years. And the reason is because they have parking, and I make sure that people don't overpark. And I've had numerous other fitness tenants who wanted to come in, and I haven't been able to find one who was willing to live with these kinds of restrictions until now. So I'm as much adamant about keeping the parking available for the tenants as you are.
Well, you've got to keep your businesses going.
Yeah, I got to keep the tenants happy, or it doesn't work for anyone.
Thoughts, anybody?
I would just say that any approval does run with the land, and that the decision letters are on the land record. So when someone either purchases the property or goes to rent the property, whatever, I mean, due diligence should hold, that they would find it, find the document.
Yeah, but you know what really happens.
But then, just like any other place, then it's a zoning violation. But then, just like any other place, then it's a zoning violation.
Right.
Don't we have to come back anyway?
You do, you would, but people forget.
Well, not necessarily for a change of tenant. I mean, if it was exercise one going to exercise two, that wouldn't come back to the commission.
And it could be a totally different kind of exercise, where you would have to make sure that the hours were still restricted.
Right.
Go ahead, Indy.
This, this would be a special permit because we're allowing a use, making a determination where when we, with other special permits, if there's any change of tenant, that we could require them to come back.
We're actually, we could do that, because right now, so when you came back in with that use, maybe you're saying, because right now, we're just lifting, we would just be lifting the condition of the 95 approval, was it?
I, I think we'd be better off making a special...
We have to change the, there's an approval on this, so we'd have to change that, and then we'd have to say that they would come in by special permit for any proposed...
Change of tenant.
For, or any proposed use group two and three uses.
Well, I'm saying you could, you could restrict it to a change of tenant also.
Yeah.
If you wanted to.
I'm just trying to give you, give us some...
Because of the, because of the special permit. Try to help out the situation.
Yeah.
Does anybody else have thoughts?
So no matter what, change of occupancy of the space comes back?
Tenant or...
Tenant or use comes back.
If you wanted to do that, you could, you could.
Okay. I think, I think the thing that kind of...
I mean, my only consideration would be if it's, if it's a retail use, which is permitted in use group, and it just meets the requirements, it doesn't require a special permit. So if it returned to a retail use, wouldn't have to come back. But if we changed the use to a...
But then you're in an iffy place, because you've gone to use group two and three now. Okay? Forget, yes, you can do retail in use group two, but you're now use group two and three, so it's what do we write about you being use group two and three that works across the board? And we'd have to pick up retail in that because you're saying, oh, that's as of right because it's use group one, but you're, you're leaving that behind. So we would have to figure out how to write it so that it works. And I get that it shouldn't be so burdensome that anytime you change a tenant, you got to run into P&amp;Z. But at the same time, it has to work. I'm concerned, I think we're concerned about the traffic and the parking, because that's a really crazy section of the Post Road there.
That's the limiting factor.
And that's the limiting factor. We had some misgivings, as we were talking about it yesterday, about the retail continuity, but I get your point, that the stairs, I hear you that the stairs could be discouraging.
And it's so far back from the street, and that whole corner, that whole corner of the building also kind of drops away, too, which makes it difficult.
It does, it's awkward.
Yeah, it really is.
Yeah.
So I would, yeah, really appreciate...
I think as soon as you go up the stairs, that it has a different feel personally.
And it's evidenced by the fact that Roundabout, which is a successful retail operation, wanted to move down.
Right, right.
Because it wasn't, they, they felt they were losing business being in the up, and they took the Citibank slot, right?
Yeah, they took Citibank, and their business is so much better.
Okay.
I mean, they're really happy down.
Thoughts, folks?
Well, I think this is a good opportunity to not only help you out, but I think it helps the community out. When you, you don't want vacant stores, and I, I think that there's probably a way to jiggle this so that everybody's happy. But we wanted there to be a, you know, vibrant commercial district, and I, I think this might be, I think that we might have the workings of a solution here that can help everybody. I was just curious about the, the space that's mothballed. I just want to understand, it seems like this is unfortunate, and, you know, we're looking for housing.
I know.
So, does anybody have any thoughts of what, what might be able to...
What happened with that housing application?
Well, I, back in 2007, I came in and I actually got approval to build eight condos above there, and then the market got kind of bad, and so I decided it wasn't a good time to go forward with it. And I've since investigated perhaps doing apartments up there. In fact, Katie came over and I showed it to her. And I've had an architect come up with a plan where we could add perhaps up to 16 apartments. But at the end of the day, it all kind of comes down to the parking. And in order to do the 16 apartments, I actually have to excavate under the current parking below to add 20 parking spaces, so...
Did you talk to Katie, you may have an opportunity, because we are trying to, we are trying to figure out how to have mixed-use sites work better, so that on the assumption that when residential people get home, the business people have left.
Right.
And that you don't have to have as much parking. And we're working on some regulations for which there is a workshop this week.
Thursday evening.
So it's your opportunity actually to, if you have the time, at 7 o'clock Thursday?
Thursday evening, but the, the idea would be to, to park for the peak of each of the uses, as opposed to making sure you have parking for each specific use.
Right, right.
And there was a calculator, which we're going to present on Thursday, where you would plug in the square footage of all your various uses and whatever, and you'd hit the button and the number pops out of the parking that you would need based on the peak, as opposed to the individual use. So I don't know what it would do for this particular site, but...
Right.
It's going to be interactive. Mr. Adler's just going to love it. But it's going to be interactive is the idea, so you could figure out how a mixed-use site might work. That would reduce, if we, if we move forward with that, and it's in the workshop, I mean, we're just preliminary, it might reduce your overall parking demand because your Fidelity people will go home.
Right, right. Yeah, in the evening, I mean, the only...
Can you speak into the microphone?
I'm sorry. Gerlick and Herb stays open till 7 o'clock, FedEx is there till 8 or 9. But in the evening, my parking lot is empty, except for all the restaurants up the street who use it. But, you know, we have plenty of parking late in the evening.
I think that's the shared parking issue, is that actually, well, if ours, your parking lot's used by other, other tenants, not your tenants, but other tenants in the area.
Exactly.
Saturday morning, you wouldn't have shared parking because you'd have all the retail that's theirs open, and the tenants are home on a Saturday morning.
Right.
Except Fidelity's typically not open on Saturdays.
They're not open on, yeah, all weekend.
The other point is that right side that's up those stairs would actually make a nice lobby for your residential.
Right.
And the fitness club could be an amenity versus...
Right, right. That's actually...
So I think that, I think what Peter was getting at, we don't want this little application then to give up, force you to give up the residential component, because we really are trying to build the residential component down. And so we don't want you to get pigeonholed, where then that goes away. And so we just want you to make sure you're thinking of that.
No, definitely. In fact, I mean, this Saturday, for example, we're doing some test borings under the building to figure out if we actually can, you know, put parking under there, and if there's rock and what's going on. So I'm actively...
You may not need to.
I'm sorry? I may not need to?
You may not need to.
Yeah, okay. Well, that's good to know.
It's our point, the 19 spaces underneath the building that would be vacant at night, and vacant on the weekends, because that's primarily being used by, by Fidelity.
Yeah.
And to be honest, I have an impression of Fidelity having lots and lots of marble and very few human beings.
You're a little...
So you, I don't even know how much space they're occupying right now, but you might, it might work out with what we're headed with the regulations.
Sure, that's great.
That you wouldn't need to expand the parking. But let's get back to your initial step one here.
Right.
Maybe the solution, rather than us trying to figure out how we would lift the conditions, since we're clearly open to it, from what I'm hearing, everybody's open to lifting it, right? Yes? In that case, is, could you come back to us? Could we leave this open? Could you come back to us with how you propose to give us a straw man for how to address it, leaving both use group two and use group three, treating it as a second floor, but just putting in some sort of protection so that we don't get a use that's hugely parking-intensive without having some control about, over it? I think that's the main concern. If you can just give us something, I don't even, I don't know, do we have to do it in a way that he has, they have to come and, at a hearing, or can, yes, right? Yeah, okay. So if you could come and submit something to us, and just, so we can play with it, and figure out how to go, give us some thoughts on how to go. You know what our concerns are.
I do. Now, as far as the special permit is concerned, though, the group fitness center... Sorry, the group fitness center, I don't believe requires a special permit, it's just the site plan. So are we saying that we, if we come back to you with those numbers and with the conditions that we're talking about, that might be approved? But to take Mr. Fox's point, that condition that any change in use in the future would require a special permit.
You comfortable with that?
Is that, that's acceptable? Okay.
We just need a mechanism that gives us clawback.
Got it, got it. And then maybe, I'll come up with something about the retail use that could maybe go to administrative approval if blah, 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 something like that.
We just, if we release the condition.
Yep.
It's released.
Right.
And we don't have any ability to regulate change of use.
Understood.
So we need that protection.
Okay, all right, we'll work on it.
And you know, we just, we see stuff that happens, I mean, I know you're in good faith here, but stuff happens, people don't get it permitted, and the next thing you know, you've got a mess.
Well, I don't want to...
And you don't want a mess, I got that, but...
Yeah, but so do we have to come back here again?
I don't think, if, if you trust Mr. Hasland, you probably wouldn't, if you're comfortable with what he's proposing, because he's just going to give us a way of amending the existing conditions.
I'm okay with that. I just don't want to have it take too long, because I don't want to lose the tenant.
How busy are we on this 25th? Oh, he just made a big eyes at us.
Make it a short period.
The way these, the way these agendas are going, half of it will be off by the time...
I hope they'll try to keep this one on.
Yeah, I mean, if we can, if we can work it out, I mean, if you can come in with something soon enough where staff is comfortable with it, and it seems likely the commission can move it quickly, then potentially I think we could...
It's pretty strict.
We also meet on July 9.
Pardon?
Yeah, I'm seeing it, okay, so either the 25th or the 9th, I'm guessing you don't want to wait till the 23rd, but those are our next meetings. So it's how quickly Mr. Hasland can get it done.
He's going to do it, he's going to do it tonight.
I guess there's no good games on, huh?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so that's what we'll do, and we'll, we'll work it out. I think we've got a solution.
Okay, great, go ahead.
Okay.
Understood, thank you.
And don't forget about Thursday night at 7:00, it's right in here, and the consultant is coming, and he's going to talk about what we're proposing, what we've been trying to do for the commercial zones, but our objective is to help the businesses be more viable.
And that starts at 7:00, sorry?
At 7:00, please?
Yeah, 7:00, and it's, it's, we're just presenting the project as a whole and looking at part one of the project in a workshop format, so we're a ways away from presenting anything to the planning and zoning commission formally. It's just a way to, to tell everybody what we're up to, get some initial feedback, and, you know, it should be short and sweet as far as planning and zoning meetings go, but it's, I think it's, I think it's of great interest, or at least it should be of great interest to property owners in, well, not actually all of Greenwich, and...
I got your memo, so I was just curious, because how late do you think you might go? Because I actually have to be in Westport at 6:00 that night, unfortunately, with a long-term...
Probably 8:30, 9:00. It's scheduled till 9:00, but it's, it depends on how much feedback we get. I mean, we're only presenting shortly, and then we're looking at getting feedback from there.
And you're going to hear, hopefully, somebody else will come, and other business owners will opine on the issues that they would like us to address, although Katie has been going out and talking to the chamber and whatever, but just, we're, we're trying to get to this. You can always send Mr. Adler, he's squirming over there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, so we're going to leave this one open?
The commission's requesting a break, and I need to find out who's seated, because...
Because I wasn't seated.
You weren't seated. 10:75 did not open, only 5 Riverside opened. And on 5 Riverside, it doesn't say who's seated, Patrick. The two people who were out last week was Levy and Fox, which means that Yaski and Goss would be seated on this app, so I'll just do it that way, I think.
They're one and the same, aren't they?
Well, we need to talk about that. It's two laws.
I know, but I'm just saying, it's from my...
I'm thinking, perspective. Yesterday, we didn't discuss them at the same time, we discussed one and then the other. Because of the way the site flows, I think we need to discuss them, open them both together.
Right, but I'm just saying...
Well, because you were in Scotland, my friend.
So which one are we talking about?
The next one. Don't leave, because it's fascinating. So, Delise.
Yeah, yeah. So, I'm just saying is...
I don't think he was here.
Your recollection... And, and I'm just saying is Dennis will sit for both of them, because, no, I'm not leaving, but I'm just suggesting continuity.
Dennis and I, we figure one's, you know...
We're actually one person.
Really?
He tells me when he's not coming in, I tell him I'm not coming. I'm not coming on that.
Those two, right? So this is, this is the...
It was you that sent the note, not Harman?
I sent it like two weeks ago.
My memory's not... As long as somebody knows.
Margarita?
Yeah.
We make our...
Levy was in...
Hey, Andy. How are you, my friend? Good, you doing well? Good, good.
I have the, 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 the clickers with the cameras, and the listening TVs in the house. They get some, they're making some noise. I have some, I have some...
Yeah.
We will, so you're going to have to put it on the screen.
Yeah, I, I, I wanted that on the screen.
I thought you had Ray Offlin on there.
I'm sorry.
She said, yeah, no.
He's taking a whole pen and button, boy.
He's trying to change the channel on his TV, it's not working.
Um, here's a question for you, Mr. Hegney. On these two applications that are before us, um, for 1075 Post Road Realty, we're thinking it may make more sense to do them both at the same time, since the, even though it's two properties, that because of the way the site circulates, that everything, the traffic circulates, that it would make more sense to have a, discuss the flow all together. But we would have to then, you know, we've opened five already, Five Riverside Lane already, you would have to make that part of the 1075 building's record, and we would, we'll still need to make some specific comments about each one, so.
Yeah, the, the only concern I would have is if we're ready to get one approved, and there's something that's hanging up on the other one that I wouldn't want both of them to get hung up.
Well, we would close them separately, then, and we could decide one and not the other. Just, we're not making it one application, we're just saying, let's get all the same information out. Does everybody agree with that?
Yes.
We'll get all the same info, but then when we decide it.
It's two.
It's two applications, and we could decide one and not the other.
So the tran, so the transcript, um, we would have two transcripts, one for 13 and one for 14, that would basically say the exact same thing. They, well, not basically, they would, they would say the exact same thing.
And then do you want to make the.
There's still two separate applications, you just.
Yeah, not joining the applications, just, just not discussing the traffic and the parking twice.
Correct.
And then the question is then, would the Five Riverside from the last meeting become part of the record for 1075?
No.
It doesn't need to be.
You wouldn't have to do that, unless you wanted to do that.
I don't think we talked much about it. I think we stuck to our knitting.
You did, yeah.
Okay, so we will then now discuss both applications 13 and 14, 1075 Post Road Realty, Final Coastal Site Plan and Special Permit, Five Riverside Lane, and 1075 Post Road. And Mr. Hegney, on this application, although everybody's here, uh, Mr. Yeski is seated for Mr. Fox, and Ms. Goss is seated for Mr. Levy.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commission Members, for the record, Tom Hegney, on behalf of the applicant. Uh, I would ask that since we did open the application for Five Riverside Lane, uh, which is PLPZ 2019, 195 and 196, that we incorporate the transcript from that hearing in with the application for 1075 East Putnam Avenue, which is PLPZ 2019, 160 and 161. That way, we'll both.
All the record will be complete.
As you have them to vote on separately, you'll have the record for both.
Okay.
The, uh, application for, uh, 1075 is to, uh, formalize, uh, a restaurant for the space where Odilees is located. Uh, they have a, uh, frame shop up on the second floor, an office on the second floor, uh, and they want to have a restaurant as an approved use on the second floor. On the first floor, there's a, uh, nail salon and the food service establishment, which is Odilees, for people to come in and, and pick up breakfast, lunch, or, or dinner, as I find the cases for me on West Putnam on several days a week.
Need to iron that.
Uh, I, I think Mr. DeAndrea was using it as part of a, a rain, oh, no, actually, it was me using it as part of protecting myself from the rain. So we have two parcels, 1075, uh, East Putnam Avenue, which is, again, access by a entrance-only off of East Putnam. Uh, the existing building, uh, which was built in the twenties, uh, is at the northerly part of the property. Uh, it then continues on, uh, to number Five Riverside Lane, where we have the building which we're looking to reconstruct and is currently under construction. These properties had been in common family ownership for many years. Uh, this was in trust for family members, this was owned by the trustees in their own names, uh, as Riverside Flooring, and it has always essentially been used as one site for circulation. So as you can see, the parking is set up on, um, uh, 1075 at an angle, so that, uh, you can readily utilize it as part of entering on 1075. Uh, exiting here would be, I would describe as problematic, uh, because you have the left turn lane onto Riverside Avenue, going west on East Putnam Avenue, uh, so you have a fairly wide, um, uh, roadway, uh, for going east out of this. So you have the advantage of coming to Riverside Lane, coming down and having the ability to use the traffic light, uh, to turn left, or to bear right, uh, going westbound on, uh, the post road. Uh, so, the second floor in this area, we're proposing as a restaurant for, uh, the, uh, for Odilees as part of the first floor, a kitchen, and, uh, having outdoor dining, uh, of, uh, 10 seats. Um, I know there was a question that came up on the adequacy of the stairs to, uh, the second floor, and whether they are, uh, safe to navigate. Um, and so I asked Mr. Ridberg to go and analyze them, uh, and I would like, because we're not really proposing to do anything on this site, everything is where it is.
We sent, we sent the building department out there today, and we got an answer from the building department that the top riser doesn't fully meet code.
Well, um.
But you knew that.
Actually, I, I have, uh, Mr. Ridberg's code analysis, and I would like to distribute that to you, and then have him go over it.
But we need to go to the parking, because I think the stairs can be fixed. So, um.
For the record, Rudy Ridberg.
Is that what they got?
Ridberg Architects. Uh, I did go out to the site and take a look, and, um, while the stair is not compliant to today's standards, which, uh, in this letter you'll see, um, the today's standard would be a seven-inch riser, max, 11-inch tread. The issue with this building is that, um, while the landing at the top comes up and doesn't have a full 36-inch landing, it has a landing. The real key here is that this is an existing stair, we have no change of use, um, for the space, because.
Yes, I'm sorry.
If you read my, if you read my commentary, and I'll go through it here, okay? The second floor right now is a business use, which is the real estate section. The other retail space, the frame shop, is, is done by a different stair totally. Um, and whether you counted the restaurant, in, in my second paragraph here where I referenced Odilees as a restaurant, would be normally classified as an A2, um, assembly use, because it serves less than 50 people, it's less than 750 square feet, it is classified as business. So therefore, with no change of use, we don't have any requirement to try to seek to change the stair. Now, there are two problems with it. One is the handrails, while they're good, because there's two on either side, there's one on either side for a total of two, um, they're low. I would suggest that they would be raised up. I've already talked to the building owner, we would do that. So at 30 inches, again, in the old code, 30 inches was, was compliant. And, um, the problem with the top stair is that you would have to remove some of the wall that's into eccentric property to extend it to be a 36-inch landing. So there are some inconsistencies with the existing stair, but I think if I explained this to Mr. Marr, uh, who came out from the building department, do you know?
John.
John Valerie? Okay.
And what John Valerie got was that all the, um, that the treads were all, okay, so they use a different measuring tape than you, the treads were all 11, and all the risers were seven, except for the topmost one, which was seven and three quarters, and for what it's worth, humble chair measured it earlier this week and got, um, almost eight on the top riser, and I got seven on all the others. So, um, there you go. Um, the only reason it was an issue, to be honest with you, I think Mr. Hegney's aware of this, I took a flyer on the top riser.
Were you going up or down?
I was going up, and I took it, I took it with an entire tray of food, because you can't see the riser when you're carrying the food up the stairs, and there was soup all over the walls. So that was actually the only reason I raised it.
Yep.
What?
So.
It's still there, the soup is still there.
Was the soup still there?
The soup is still there.
There were still some remnants there, and there was a woman walking up the stair with soup in her hand.
Only reason the question got raised was because I happened to have fallen there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and it puzzled me, although I am a spaz. So, um.
No, so.
If you don't mind, it, do you mind if we address this later?
That's fine.
In the conversation, because I think we've got some other stuff that's more pressing than whether or not I tripped on a riser.
I'll talk to John about it, because again, it's one of those unique situations where the code allows you to maintain an existing stair. If you even read the, the code sections I gave you, there, it talks about that, you know, under section, um, uh, here, where it says means of egress, I'm sorry, the wrong one, there's one here. It references that an existing stair, uh, any stairway replaced an existing stairway within a space where the pitcher slope cannot be reduced because of existing construction shall not be required to comply with the maximum riser height minimum. So there's, there's.
I get you.
Ways to get around it. I would try to make the stair more comfortable. I measured the first 10, and they were all seven and a half, and they're covered with carpet, so a little difficult. The last one's different, you're allowed a certain three-eighths variance of riser height, so there are some ways to discuss it differently.
Okay, so let's do the big issues, and then let's address that. I, so.
One of the issues that, uh, I had proposed that we were compliant with parking as part of our, uh, combining the two par, properties together to make 1075 more compliant with parking while adding the, uh, spaces, uh, the seats, rather. Um, I put together a letter which I delivered to staff, uh, last week, uh, and this was after I went over with the zoning enforcement officer, my argument that, uh, the nail salon has been there since the early nineties, and, uh, at the time it went in to that space, uh, you didn't have the same requirement that was adopted in, I think, 2006 for, uh, uh, two parking spaces per, uh, station. And if you do it just on a, uh, square footage basis, uh, then it would, uh, it would be, uh, compliant. Uh, Jody took a, a different attitude, and he said, I think you can get to where you need to be, but you need to do it in a different fashion. I think you need to use the parking requirement for the space in each of the, uh, retail spaces, office space, and the personal service. Uh, so that's why I prepared the, um, chart that is on page 527 of your, uh, uh, agenda, and showing that currently, we are 17 spaces deficient at 1075, and by combining the parking with both sites, we would then be only 13 spaces deficient, even using, uh, the, uh, additional seating that we're proposing as part of the restaurant, and that's 32 seats inside, and then the seasonal dining of 10 seats outside. So that, uh, the parking requirement for, uh, existing would be 38 spaces. Uh, we're proposing, uh, uses that would require 44 spaces, uh, but we're adding an additional 10, uh, so that we're, uh, four spaces to the good.
You know, I'm curious, Katie, would 69 apply here, that if, since the use was made non-conforming? I mean, this, 69 says land and buildings, but if something is made non-conforming by our regulations, and the property is held, then the owner has a way of addressing the non-conformity because he owns the adjacent property, the parking on Five Riverside would have been part of the, would have addressed it? Or does 69 only pertain to property itself?
Go ahead.
69 deals with, uh, frontage and area, uh, so that if the parcel next door, I'll, I'll give you an example, I have two. give you an example, I have two...
It's a lot.
Lots in an R six zone that are each fifty by a hundred. Neither meet their criteria. By owning them together, you then have, unless you've been using them separately, you then have one piece that is compliant both with frontage and with area.
Are these, are these technically in the same ownership anyway?
They are now.
They are now, okay.
And that's just been, that's just been something that has occurred recently.
Anyway, go ahead.
But I don't think, I don't think it would anyway, because they're not non-conforming, I mean, in terms of size or anything along those lines.
Yeah, it's just non-conformity, use is non-conforming.
Not, not for use.
It's just, it's not that the use is non-conforming, it's that...
The parking is not conformant.
Parking for that use is now non-conforming.
Just curious. Okay, go ahead. So now you're gonna reduce the non-conformity by adding the ten spaces from next door?
Correct. And so then we are more compliant, so that we're more conforming with what we're proposing here than exists currently.
So your parking demand for this space goes from seven spaces to seventeen spaces? Is that correct?
Correct, but that also includes the second floor space, so...
That's the restaurant alone. The food service alone goes from seven spaces to seventeen.
Well, that includes the forty-two seats in the restaurant.
Right.
So, it includes part of that second floor space, so there's four spaces for the second floor space that is included in that, that was previously included with the second floor office retail. So as you see, it reduces from eleven to seven.
Just to clarify, the parcels are now owned in the same name?
Yes.
Were they merged?
There's been no formal merger of them.
Should, I mean, if you're using the parking now, shouldn't we merge them? Because isn't it, since you're, there's no legal reason to have them in separate pieces, doesn't it help by merging these lots, and then you don't have to have cross easements and all those other things?
Well, in terms of a cross easement, the LLC would be giving an easement to itself.
But you would have to do it, just, you would have to put it on the record, because if they didn't exist on the land records, if the lots weren't merged and the owner decided to sell one of them, you then don't have a functioning business, which I think is where you're going.
Well, but also, he's counting on the ten spaces on the other piece, and then so you need, besides the access easement, for the drive, you need the parking easement.
Correct, and that, there is no formal document, even when they were separately owned by separate entities with different interests?
But we would...
That was not, that was not of record, it was just in practice.
Right.
But I think your point is well-taken. There should be not only an easement for parking, but also for drivers, for driver, for egress, ingress and egress.
Yeah, you would never, we would condition you with that, no question.
No, I, I think that that's an appropriate condition to have, and it's good for something to be on the land records. And I haven't talked to my client about merger and what the effect of that is and how that affects future use of, of the properties, or sale of the properties, I should say, not so much the use.
So the owner's LLC is gonna give itself an easement to use the other lot?
Yes.
For parking, okay.
And I, I don't do it all the time, but I have done it more than a few times.
Because otherwise, it's not in the land records.
That's two lots.
Okay, all right, so we've got that. So you've got, what you're arguing is that if you add these twenty-four seats upstairs, plus the outdoor dining, that, and the ten spaces from the next, from the other property, you will be deficient by only fourteen spaces.
Uh...
Yes, fourteen, because there's a math error in your existing, so I think it's fourteen, no, well, whatever, call it thirteen.
Thirteen, so...
So you're gonna say it's deficient by only, but you're reducing the deficiency by adding this dining.
Correct.
Does anybody have any comments on that?
I think what we're looking at here is...
Here, here's all my math.
We're getting marginally better with the parking. But this particular site has an exceptional traffic pattern through it. And I think we're going from a, kind of a destination retail, the flooring store, to now a more intense, or actually two more intensive retail uses. We could disregard the jewelry store, I guess it's by appointment only. I'm finding that the balance between the less deficient issue and the more intense use of the site is off. And I think actually what we're seeing here is, I guess, we're gonna have more cars on the site, really, to account, that are coming to these two new retail spaces that we did before. But we're really not making the parking situation any better, and I think it's being exacerbated by the, just the physical layout of the parking, the driveways are routed, how you access the sites and how you exit the sites.
Of course, our regulations really don't differentiate between a more successful or active retail versus a less active retail. So Riverside Flooring being a retail outlet, we're still going to have retail with the bakery, the fish market, and the jewelry store, so that it's still in the same use group, and it still has the same parking requirements under six-one-fifty-eight.
But the timing changes, right? The timing of the operations is composed, as opposed to Riverside Flooring, which was random at best, right? Now a bakery, a fish market, and on top of the restaurant. I see the numbers, but I agree with Nick, Commissioner McCreary, that it just feels like, yeah, I see it, but there's gotta be a timing component to this thing, too, because you can envision that, that midday kind of thing, this could be a mess.
I think it's more than midday, because, you know, Balducci's quite busy, the, I think the problem is both Odeleese and Balducci's are quite successful. And you get the flow-through with the nail parlor and the other businesses. That's the dilemma, it seems, seems to several of us, that you've got successful tenants.
This is certainly something that my client thought about in terms of selecting tenants for the building at, at Five Riverside Lane.
But the traffic patterns are, are complimentary.
Yeah, that's really sad.
So it, there's, so it's not as bad as it could be. So, I mean, I'd go there, and I, I don't seem to have any problem turning into...
I don't think it's a traffic, I don't feel it's a traffic pattern, I just think it's the volume of traffic or the need for parking, given the success of the businesses.
The potential of it becoming a victim of its own success, where actually now you have two very, very...
That would not be a good thing. And, and my client has thought that through in terms of who does he want on his property to complement his business, which is Odeleese. So he's, he's not just the landlord, he's also the tenant, and he wants to make sure that his very successful business is not harmed by who he brings on to the property.
I don't think it's actually, I don't think it's actually gonna be, you know, any one tenant. I think actually it could be actually all three, because at a time, it's like, yes, I love to go to the bakery, and I run over and get some codfish, and that's great, and something at Odeleese, because I'm shopping, and then everybody's like, yeah, I do that all the time, and then it winds up, actually, nobody want, nobody can go there anymore because it's actually, the parking and the driveways are terrible, and it actually says, eh, I don't go there anymore, it was too hard to get to. You know, that's what I mean, victim of its own success.
You can get your nails done at the same time you're there, so, you know, there are a lot of opportunities. Get your painting framed.
There's one thing that strikes me, is while you are showing a reduction in the non-conformity or the deficiency, you know, might you consider, because it'll be, I think, bad for business if people can't find a place to park, is hold off on the additional restaurant seating, because that's, that's the real increment here. That's something that's controllable within the Odeleese, part of the venture here.
We have in our regulations a food service establishment, which is limited to twelve seats. Once you get beyond that, then you're a restaurant, so there's no sort of in-between, and as you go from a food service establishment to a restaurant, you, rather than doing it on a square footage basis, you do it on a per-seat basis.
Yeah, no, I, I understand all that, Mr. saying on a pure parking space basis. I think the, this site could be really stressed, and you have the ability to sort of not do, you know, the additional seating upstairs, which is, is the big increment here, from seven spaces to seventeen.
So if I understand you, right, Mr. Harbitt, is that actually, it's a development of the, the retail spaces, the new retail spaces, prior to the restaurant?
Right.
And see if it works?
Exactly.
And if it does work, then come back to visit that retail, the restaurant space.
Yeah, I, I have another thought, and that's that, although I think we are becoming more compliant with what we're proposing here, that it could be even more so if we took the step of eliminating ten seats in the restaurant at the time, inside, at the time we have the outdoor dining, so that there would be no more than a total of thirty-two seats at any one time, which would be about four seats, four spaces less.
That gets us to a better situation in the deficiency then, just four seats?
Four seats downstairs, instead of eight.
So that would be four less parking spaces is demand, so that we would have a total of thirty-two seats at any one time that would be available. And the space on the second floor actually works well, because there is a section that can be closed off easily from the rest of the restaurant.
I have with Tony Deandra here deja vu about fish garbage.
We did have this discussion.
We did have this discussion.
I, I told him from the last meeting that he had to be here, because he was the, the fish scrap expert.
So it brings up a couple of things. One is, the fish operation that we dealt with before had a massive catering option that, you know, we, and I know the current, you call it a restaurant, or has catering, is, can you explain what is going on with catering in these two locations and catering deliveries, and...
Make a note to yourself that we're probably gonna have to...
How, because that needs to be figured into the traffic as well as garbage, because it is a much tighter site than Tony's masterpiece.
So this is Greg Adenizio, he is the owner of the property as well, or partner and the owner of the property as well as an owner of Odeleese, and I think he's best to be able to address that question.
So we actually don't do any, my name is Greg Adenizio. We actually don't do any catering out of this facility. We do it all out of our Stanford location. We have a seven thousand square foot commissary, eleven walk-ins, two eight-yard dumpsters, you know, it's a, it's a six lot in Stanford.
Do they deliver pre-prepared foods here?
We, we deliver a lot of, so we'll get cases of chicken, we'll break down the chicken, and what will go to the shops are the chicken stock and the breasts, and we roast the breasts, and we use the chicken stock and the bone broth in our shops. So the boxes that the chicken come in do not end up in that dumpster, they end up in our Stanford dumpster.
But your, your issue is the fish catering, not...
Well, I'm just saying, I'm looking at it all together in terms of parking, deliveries, catering, trash, because we don't have a lot of real estate for all of those actions. And I have, going through the documents, I didn't really see, you know, how deliveries are happening, you know, is there a prohibition of the fish doing catering out of this location?
Can we have Victor come up? And Victor's with the Greenwich Fish.
Oh, good, yes.
So, so for Odeleese, we take our deliveries in our, in the morning, up until around ten o'clock. We deliver from our commissary, we make all of our baked goods in Stanford, all of our salads, packaged salads, all those types of things get delivered to the shop first thing in the morning by six fifteen. Garbage is picked up daily, except for Sunday. That's both cardboard and, and garbage. As far as the fish goes, Chris, Victor has a, an explanation on how he's gonna manage the fish.
Good evening, my name is Victor Alvarez, I'm owner of Greenwich Fish Company. Normally, my fish business happens during the early, early morning. I normally go to the Fulton Fish Market twice a week, Monday and Thursdays, get there at one o'clock in the morning, normally get back by four. Truck would be unloaded by like five in the morning. And my plan is to treat all the fish scraps and all the fish garbage as fresh fish. We're not gonna use a dumpster for, for our fish scraps. What we're gonna do is, we're gonna put them in the cooler, and every day we will drive them ourselves to the Greenwich Transit Facility. You know, we, from my experience, we've done that before, that works really well. I know that, you know, fish, fish can be in the dumpster in the summertime.
They're fire smell.
Yeah, part of smell. So, yes, you know, that's in, that's in our plan, that's how we're gonna process our, our waste. That way, you know, my goal is to establish a pristine fish, fish market there, and obviously we wanna keep everybody happy.
How about catering?
Catering, in my plan, there is a little bit of catering, limited to just clam bakes and roe bars, because, you know, Odeleese, that's his catering too, so we can, we have a non-compete agreement with him. So I only gonna do clam bakes and roe bars. Most of the times when that happens, that happens at the customer's house, most, ninety percent of the time, the trash stays there, and if we have to take it back, we would treat it the same way we treat the, the fish scraps.
And you wouldn't be parking, either of you, a delivery vehicle on-site?
No, my, the...
After hours?
No, delivery vehicle. The way my business works, I, we have, I have a freight company that would, I go do all the buying, put it in somebody else's truck, they bring it at five o'clock in the morning, and that's it.
Okay, because again, we don't have a lot of spare parking for company vehicles.
Yeah, that's basically how I'm gonna be operating. Thank you.
Thank you.
But what will you do if you have catering for the catering vehicles? Then you would have to have a company vehicle of some sort.
Since my catering is gonna be limited to just clam bakes and, and roe bars, normally, when I say clam bakes, we're not gonna be doing a hundred people clam bakes, that normally is somewhere between twenty, thirty people. And, you know, we use a small vehicle, which I, is my personal vehicle a lot of times, to go out and, 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 you know, bring the lobsters and bring the clams and the oysters to the customer's house. That's how it happens.
Well, back on the traffic.
I, I did want...
Totally, I just gotta tell you, I, you're probably, you're gonna regret that I went there. So, I'm on East Cut, and I go to turn left into the site.
Yep.
And as I go to turn left, sure enough, there's a car backing out, so I can't pull into the lot. And somebody comes blowing down Wampus Lane and hangs a hard right without slowing down. And... And somebody comes blowing down Wampus Lane and hangs a hard right without slowing down and manages to stop before they hit me because they look left and turn right because they weren't even thinking there was going to be somebody pulling in there. I don't know what you do about that. I don't go to this site very often. I've been there. But where Wampus Lane comes out, I don't know what you do about the fact that the traffic only looks left. They don't expect something to be on their right and they pull out. You'd think they would with all the years this has been there, but they don't. So just, and this is why Mr. McRae asked last time, could we do the circulation differently? And we debated it a whole lot and we decided, no, you can't. But that Wampus Lane thing is not great there. And as the traffic increases to this site, because let's be honest, Riverside Flooring's been gone for three years?
No.
Two years?
Um, two years this October.
Okay. It feels like forever, but so that's been dead for a while. And now you're going to pick up the business. And I think one of the things to consider is some signage for the Wampus Lane people and get an agreement there. But I can't think of another solution.
Well, I, I think people are pretty savvy that shop there and when Porcelinova closes at 5:00, that people tend to use that lot. You know, most people, you know, again, it's tough competition between Balducci's and, and Odeleese in terms of the prepared foods for, for dinner. So I, you know.
But then we, again, as Mr. Hagney pointed out at the last meeting, there's a, there's a small change in grade between the Porcelinosa and the, who's Porcelinosa? And the site, you could put steps on one side of it, two steps. There's no grade change where your angled parking is.
Right.
So you could somehow do a deal where you negotiate some parking at the, on that site. I don't know how big that site is, whether that's sufficient parking there.
Well, you've got about 12 spaces.
But I think it's more than that square footage needs.
Looking for a third-party agreement to use some parking of Porcelinosa for businesses?
That have, that happen to have non-conforming parking. The other solution that you guys were talking about where you reduce the amount of dining sounds very reasonable though.
Well, I, that's one thought I had. The other point I wanted to make is that all the employees for the nail salon come by van. So there's no parking.
That's true.
I think that that's almost universal for nail salons.
No, we know. You know, we look dumb, but every now and then we know something.
You know, it seems to me deja vu again. Doesn't this scream for some kind of a parking timing schedule? Because you've got hours on the bakery. Last time you said.
They did that.
Yeah, and.
I moved through all this twice.
Yeah, there's a little, a letter from Hagney, Mr. Hagney, sorry, where they talk about what time the fish store is going to be busy.
Did they blend it all together?
5:28.
You know, I, I really want Mr. Adenizio to speak to this because he's given an awful lot of thought to who he wanted in the space and how it would work and be complimentary, not just in product, but also in timing. Greg, could you go through that with the question?
Yeah, so when we, when we first conceptualized 1075 and 5 Riverside, we kept getting exercise and other uses that were not what I wanted to create, which is a community. I wanted a real community place where people could walk, bike, strollers, and have a place to, you know, make one stop, just like you do in Cos Cob, where you go to the fish market, you go to the cheese shop, and you go to the meat market. I wanted to create the same thing for Riverside. We've been there for now almost 25 years. And what I believe and what I see is that people run from Balducci's to Odeleese and to the nail salon. They'll do the same thing with, with the bread and with the fish market. I, I believe that, you know, at least 50% of the customers will come to our shop, maybe grab a coffee, grab a loaf of bread, grab some sushi, and I think it's one shopper. I, I don't see it as being three different cars coming at the same time. I also, I think I spoke about this last time, our busy time is from 11:30 to 2:30. Victor's business, most people make their decision when they're going to dine, what they're going to have for dinner, after 3:00. They really, you really don't know what you're going to eat until like 4:00, 5:00, most people, unless you're a really great planner. And same with the bread market. They've got a traffic study where it says that most of the people are, you know, choosing breads and shopping later in the afternoon. And if you, if you see our lot at 5 Riverside, it is empty after 2:30. So that's where I'm very confident that the parking will work. I also, I also documented June 1st, do you want me to mention this or no? So on June 1st, Saturday, June 1st, at 1:00, we had 18 Odeleese customers. The nail salon had six customers plus their attendants.
Is that their peak time Saturday for the nail salon?
I don't, I don't know specifically, but I think it's a good, it was a good time because they had six stations, plus, again, all the, all the, all the women were taking care of them. 1075 parking lot had eight open spots. Riverside Lane had 17 open spots. There were two people on bikes. And just to, like, I looked at my business in Riverside specifically, we do 40% of our business from 7:00 to 11:00. Then we do about 35% of our business from 11:00 to 2:30. And then we do 25% of our business from 2:30 to 7:00. And the, the, the change of use to restaurant is not going to change our use. We're not bringing servers in. We're not changing what we're going to do. We just want to use, we just want to take the space that we have upstairs.
And legalize it.
That the community has been really, like, we have, we opening up our doors to meetings all the time. We don't require people to buy anything. They meet up there all the time. So we know it's a good community thing.
The, one other comment, just as long as we're talking about the dining and reducing the seats. Anecdotally, again, we're giving you Sofias. There's a storefront on a parking lot in Central Greenwich. Somebody drove through it. So we do think you should do more for the safety of that patio if you're going to legalize it as outdoor dining. Because the planters did not seem to be enough. There wasn't much that was stopping that Lexus that went through the store window. And it also happened in Stanford that somebody went through, so whatever you can do to stop a car would be.
It seems like every other year, someone doesn't want to necessarily park near the store on Greenwich Avenue. They want to park in the store. And it just happens.
It just happens.
We had it at the library where somebody jumped the curb and ran into the building.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a big, heavy curb. But what, what we talked about with, at least the building at, at 5 Riverside Lane with the, when the ARC reviewed it last week, was putting wheel stops.
More concerned about the outdoor dining at Odeleese, which has only got the planters around it. And those planters aren't very high. You can't see them from a car. Again, only because this was in the paper a few weeks ago and it was hard to believe.
Actually, I think, I think actually, the concern, as you're bringing up, actually, it's not a storefront that you'd hit, it's people.
It's people. That's the thing. In this case, it would be people because that patio is right in the parking lot, basically.
And as soon as that, that, you know, that Lexus gets wound up and is running, I don't think a planter, very small.
Okay. All right, so, so those are a couple, we're kind of jumping around.
We could certainly protect that with steel bollards to make sure that the people dining outside are not at risk.
So, so directionally, you would reduce the inside dining to the extent that you're doing the outside?
Yes, so we're proposing 10 outdoor seats. We would reduce the seating.
Reduce by 10.
By 10 inside during the season and, or when the outdoor dining is in use.
The November thing and then actually, November, they go back upstairs?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I must have missed something.
In the bakery at Odeleese or in the bake, oh, at Cobb's?
A new bakery?
No.
Okay, I, is there any chance, you know where I'm coming from, is we can get, right now, it's paved from the back of the sidewalk straight through to the restaurant. Is there any way those first triangles could be landscaping at the front of the property?
It would be safer.
Are you talking about this area right here and this here?
It would be a lot safer. Because it would allow the cars to pull in even if somebody's backing out.
It's actually here.
It would be a lot safer.
Well, and it's also my green post road.
Got it, Katie? That's Andy. I don't know if it's Katie's green post road or?
I mean, it's, it would help for your green area calculation.
Well, since we weren't making any changes to the site itself, we weren't proposing anything, but I, certainly that, that space would be available.
I think it would make it more attractive.
Even though we're making the parking.
Mr. Pop is here and is nodding yes. That would, would work.
It, it gives you safety because it allows a car to go in there. The negative is it strains your parking again.
No, it's not a parking space.
No, I, I think you're talking about.
You mean just the triangles?
I think it's this portion right here.
Okay, I got it.
That we're not counting as part of parking.
It's, they just overpaid. And at least we, it will define the parking better and it protects that, the pedestrians and.
But Mr. Pop would have to be careful not to intervene with the line of sight at coming down Wampus.
Yeah, it would be low plantings.
Yeah.
Yep.
You'd be okay on the other side because you don't need line of sight.
Well, over on.
Yeah, I got it. Yeah, yeah.
Just keeping watch, you two shade trees really nice right there.
You can't do a shade tree here.
As far as, since we're combining these, as far as 5 Riverside Lane goes, there were comments by the Conservation Commission on adding more landscaping material here and here to cut down on the amount of lawn area and provide more shrubbery. And Mr. Pop has amended his plan to reflect that. I should add that there's virtually no landscaping here. We're showing evergreens there. We're showing street trees here and creating more green space and a defined entrance off of Riverside Lane that really doesn't exist now in terms of asphalt, running to asphalt. There's a wooden barrier, but it's, but it's just asphalt from the curb, from really the curb into the site.
And as I understand it, you're also going to have some additional design consistency between the 1075 building and the 5 Riverside building so that it looks like one thing.
This is very much as, as Greg was saying, to make it a community center and to improve the services for the local area. This, this is what you want your LBR zone to be. This is the whole purpose of the zone.
More questions?
Mr. Hagney, you were aware of the engineering comments? They're talking about actually repaving Riverside Lane?
Yes. And all the more reason for us to want to move more quickly so that they're doing it in July and we're placing it in September.
Yes.
Yes, no, we do want to coordinate that.
Also, you had said that you didn't think you needed to supply flows to the sewer department because in fact the uses are not being increased. But the actuality is, they don't exist, the restaurant, the upstairs dining doesn't exist right now legally, so.
The, the flows, however, do.
But I think it would still be good to give the data and establish a baseline.
Be happy to have Mr. DeAndrea do that.
I mean, he's got the baseline data, right? Mr. DeAndrea can do that. Anybody else have questions, comments? You ready for public comment, Mr. Hagney?
Yes, I'm sure.
Any members of the public wish to speak? I see that the Riverside Association is here, so I don't know if you were planning on speaking, Riverside Association, but since you were here.
Liz Paldunis, co-president of the Riverside Association. I've talked about this as an association co-president or president for the past couple of years, that the Riverside community wants the post road to be something that reflects a character of place. And when I heard about this project, I was excited because this is a major intersection in our community. It actually has been widened to handle traffic unlike another intersection further to, to the east where I have concerns about traffic circulating in and out of this intersection. This one is designed to handle it. The idea that we would have non-chain, well, Cobb Spread is a franchise, but these are locally owned businesses in Riverside is a real plus in my view. And the idea that we're trying to create a community and a place to me is a real plus. I understand the constraints of all of the parking that goes on here. And I trust that the property owner is thinking about these things as well because he's at a real disadvantage if he can't make this work. And I leave it to your best judgment to figure out what goes on that site. But I see this as a huge opportunity to create businesses. We have new residences in the old Estate Treasures Building that will be rented sometime soon. They're putting up balconies now that, and that site has a sense of trees and it hits what Mr. Fox wants on the post road or Katie or what, what we all want.
It's the Katie Fox, Katie Fox Memorial Post Road project.
Well, it's, but it, but it's really, it's important to our association because when I try to take pictures of what Riverside is, this gets me somewhere. I could put it on my website that this is Riverside. We wouldn't be the poor stepchild of Cos Cob and Old Greenwich anymore. We'd start to have a place. And I, I get really excited about that.
Great.
So I hope that the rest of these issues can be worked out here. Anecdotally, what I will say, I sent out an email to my 900 addresses with the header "News" about Odeleese and Cobb Spread because people know that the spread store is coming. They've been talking about it for months. Do you guys know what a good open rate is in Constant Contact? Okay. If, if you do 30 to 40%, you're, you're firing on all cylinders. Riverside Association, I get people to open stuff 40 to 50% of the time. And often, the click-through rate, if I have buttons for people to look at stuff, is in the 20% range. This is really out of the ballpark as far as interest and engagement. Guess how many people opened this one? 61%. So people are curious, they're interested. I, I'm not saying necessarily that that is support, but I will say that I did get two emails to the association saying, "Thank you for getting this information out." And nobody's here tonight, so they're not here to complain. My thought is that they're here, or they responded to say, "Thanks for letting us know." And maybe this is the start of something good for the post road. So I, I say find a way to help us get it done because I think it just puts us closer. And anything that we can do to create a look that's consistent so we don't look like a mutt in River. mutt in Riverside forever, I know that we don't have the Old Greenwich and the Cobb's Cobb rules, but we have brick across the street, we have some brick here, we, it could all start to hang together and look good, so.
Yeah, I think.
Does this do that in your opinion, does that?
You know what, if, I know I'm not allowed to.
Mr. Ridberg, could you put up what the Five Riverside is, building's going to look like, I think that would help people. There you go.
Mr. Hagney, can I?
Honestly, I think it's.
Can you hear board? I want to look at the board twice.
It's fine, the problem is the Porcellanosa building in the front hides something that is pretty cool, but I, I don't get to say any, well, I can say that I don't like the way it looks, but I can't move it or change it because I don't own it, but I. Keep pushing us down the road.
The association support the project, I guess?
Well, the co-president does.
Co-president.
We haven't taken a vote, I can say that the people I emailed to are interested in the project. My board wants to get this post road in order so that we have a sense of place of Riverside and we keep taking incremental steps and as long as those steps create something that is not a mutt, I think we're headed in the right direction. And the P O C D, I'm hopeful, will take us the rest of the way there, but this is, I think it's good for our community and it's somebody who's interested in doing something for our community, so that's, that's all I have to say, thank you.
I have a couple more.
I thought you might now that you have the board up front.
Getting to Ms. Alvin's comment about protecting the dining, outdoor dining. This dead space here, I would recommend curving and planting or doing something because.
Which dead space, Mr. Fox?
The one that, there used to be a parking spot and the patio took out most of the parking spot.
Oh, okay, right in front of the patio?
Yeah, to create.
Where the parking is, yep.
A landscape buffer there because that will protect some many from pulling in there and trying to. And then here, can I, can I get any kind of ADA space close to?
Where's here, just say, just describe it?
Looks like we have oversized spaces here, I don't know, show it to Tony and see if he can get me an ADA space.
I don't, I don't want him to have to get up since it's after 11, he's been here for four hours.
Is he awake?
He's three. We're looking at doing a handicap spot at the corner.
By the wall near the loading dock?
Yeah. Thank you.
So that, that adds number eight to my list of items.
Yeah, I think you've got it.
And if I could go through those with you.
Listening, everybody, here's what we asked for.
First is to provide a cross easement between the two properties for parking and for circulation.
Or merge.
Or merge. Provide signage at Wompas Lane for traffic. Provide a green area on the south side of the entrance drive in a 1075 and also in the area adjacent to the dining, outdoor dining patio.
And would you, I think it'd enhance the outdoor dining as well.
It certainly does.
Because you could put a nice tree there.
Yeah. Reduce the number of total seats from 42 to 32 so there would be a maximum at any given time of 32 seats. Locate Ballard also at the outdoor patio so that people are protected sitting there. There would be no seating at the bakery, which actually is another number. Provide data flows to document sewer, coordinate with Public Works on the sidewalk and curb replacement on Riverside Lane and provide a handicap spot.
What additional?
Blanketing, did A R C leave you with a no return on five?
They wanted us to return for the signage and for color.
Okay.
I.
I saw you had a blue and a maroon.
And then the other thing, no overnight storage of vans?
Certainly, yeah, I think that's appropriate.
And then, I'm looking, I found it. Facade on in colors, signs details, greens, add green spaces to the site, so you can tell them P and Z address that for you.
I did it on my own.
Add a stop at the parking spots.
Yep.
Okay, that's all they've got. Katie, you said something?
Yes, and the dumpster is by that wall, right?
The, yeah, the dumpster is.
It's in a corner.
Is located right here. My client did speak with the DeLucas, the prior owners of Five and trustees for 1075 who live right there, and they said that that was fine to have the dumpster location.
And that, that dumpster is actually for both sites, all the tenants.
Correct, it will be for all tenants.
Another dumpster over here right now, oh, that's for the construction.
Yeah.
Okay, that's a, there was a dumpster there the other day and it's.
No, that's.
Okay.
No, both for cardboard and for refuse would be right here.
And that serves both sites?
It was going to serve both sites, yes.
Ms. Goss, you would like to say something?
And that's fenced in and closed in, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
I was just wondering what's behind the, the adjoining property owner behind the dumpster?
That's Mr. DeLuca.
There, right here is, there's some landscaping, their house is right here, DeLuca's house.
Garage? Hey, you can look on Google or it shows a pretty.
Because I know at.
We plan to screen it.
So.
At Fjord Fisheries, the adjoining neighbors had an issue, I just don't want that to happen again.
And that's why.
That's why they hired.
We asked Mr. Alvarez to be here to describe how he was going to handle that because if there were going to be fish scraps there, then that would be an issue for the DeLucas.
Well, he did say refuse.
Yes.
No, he said he's taking it daily to the town refuse.
All fish scraps would go there.
He's not dumping on-site.
Well, he just, just now said he would be putting refuse in that dumpster, I thought I heard.
Not fish.
Not fish.
Not fish, not fish. Fish, scraps and fresh would be handled the same way in the refrigeration unit.
Okay, thank you.
The only thing that is still a little, just to throw it out there, if the parking, once everything is rocking and rolling, doesn't work and it gets really crazy, I'd like us to still be able to look at the dining, it's the only flex point you're going to have on the site. And if it gets really crazy at a certain time of day, whether you end up, whether we can somehow come back and reopen the dining question on the second floor. And what you might want to do is just close off the first floor at part of the day, but because it's the only thing you have that's flexible if it gets bad, but to give it a shot on this basis and then I don't know how we, maybe you just figure it out, the businesses have to work.
I think Mr. Harland said that.
And you know, we have a relatively unique situation here because the owner of the property also has a successful business here that he wants to protect.
But the problem, the one thing that we didn't really talk about is that concern about people deciding to park at Balducci's, that we've got to discourage that because Balducci's doesn't always have enough parking either, so, but for now, at least we have some sort of compromise that will hopefully alleviate it. Does anybody else have comments, questions? How would you guys feel about closing this, because most of the changes are?
I know, you've got a list of things to come back with.
Well, most of them, he could.
Those are conditions.
They're conditions.
I was listing those as conditions, not as open questions.
I mean, I think you were amenable either way, but if we offer you the opportunity to close it, why not, right?
We would prefer.
To close.
We have three building permits open for the building at Five Riverside Lane for both the tenants and for the owner and.
I would like Mr. Ridberg to try to fix that top step for me.
Yes.
Okay, just because some old lady could also take a flyer, I may not be the only old lady and. An old man too, but I, I'm not a kind of person who sues anyone, but.
It's not good for customer relations.
It's not good to, and if I fell, well, maybe somebody else would fall. Okay, so we could leave it open or we could close it, what do you guys want to do?
I had a question.
Yes, ma'am.
You, you just, your point 11 was the possibility to reopen the dining issue and if we close this, do we need to specify what we want to do with that now before we close the item? Because what if we come back and close it and then our, in our conditions, we come up with a condition that the applicant doesn't particularly like or has a better way of stating?
Well, we warned him.
I, there are, I can give you some examples of special permits that have been granted where you said you want us to provide or the applicant must, six months after completion and full operation of all stores, provide a parking study to indicate what the level of parking activity is.
Yeah, and we would give you, we just did, we would give him more time, I think, till the businesses really get going and if we see a problem.
In a year.
Like a year.
Parking study one year after, after all stores have opened? That's, we've done that in the past and I think that has been helpful.
We've done it.
We just did it tonight.
We did this with Berkeley and.
And we just did it with the.
Country Day.
We're going to do something similar with Country Day, yeah, on traffic. So what do you guys want to do? Anybody want to leave it open, that's really the question? Nick?
I think actually, these are all conditions. I think this parking analysis would work and we could put this all together as a motion, but I think actually, I understand, I understand the property owner's predicament here actually because kind of ran into a situation that may cope the problem, but I don't think there's anything that's actually jumping out of here that we need more information, so I think we can close this.
I think that's, that's right, I mean.
We appreciate that.
We would have staff review the proposed landscaping, that kind of thing. Mr. Yaski?
No, I like the project, I question it, but even if it's packed, I think that'll bring more people, my experience has been, if you can't get in there, more people want to come.
It's so crowded, nobody goes there anymore, Yonibera was wrong?
So crowded, there are more people wanting to, they don't want to get missed out, right? They don't want to miss out on retail.
So if nobody wants to.
I still would love to see more of a flow chart, not a letter with a few numbers in it, but I'm willing to accept the fact that it's going to, at times it's going to be a mess, particularly getting in, but I like the project and it kind of meets, it's less non-conforming, a concept that you got to get your head around in this commission.
Yeah.
And I think we can close it and in fact, we just opened one, that'll be a record, right, we open and close on the same night?
It's a goal to aspire.
Yeah, it really might be, if everything is correct. No, you can't think of one.
I can, I can, I'll tell you later, I can tell you when it never even happened.
Okay, so we're going to close this. Okay.
Thank you.
But we're not going to decide it tonight? Okay, so we're not going to decide it tonight, but we are going to decide. The, the, Sherwood, we just have to do Sherwood because they've been waiting for us. No, we're not going to do, oh, sorry.
You've got text amendment.
I forgot about the text amendment. Okay, so let's do the text amendment, everybody, and then we can go home.
Okay, so the, the text amendment is for section 6 dash 110, which is the use regulations and special requirements for dwelling units permitted in the business zones. It's intended to be a very simple application. It started with the idea of removing the restriction period of 40 years in favor of in perpetuity. If you recall, we have had modern income zoning regulations since the 80s, they've always read in perpetuity, I'm talking about, of course, the period of time that the subsidized unit has to remain subsidized. It was changed in 2013 when the new regulation was put forth and I, and in talking to developers, it appears that that's not even on their radar this 40 years and I think if that's not a factor that entices people to submit an application, it behooves the town to have these units go back to in perpetuity so that we're thinking more long-term in terms of our planning. So that's, that's the main reason the application was brought before you in the first place and then two other minor changes were made. One was to, to clarify what common charges include and do not include and also to change the responsibility of the management of these units from the Community Development Office to the Planning and Zoning Department, which has been the course and that, the amendment just makes that more clear throughout.
Can I just make a comment? I appreciate the idea of making these units affordable perpetual, in perpetuity, but things change and demographics change. So I assume that if somebody wants to make a change, they come back to us.
Right.
But I was, I, that is, that is a significant change, so I'm just wondering if. That, that language is something we want to get into, but if somebody wants, if, if the conditions still exist and the economics still make sense, then chances are that somebody would not change that. But if, if the economics do change and demographics change, then there's no reason to, to sustain affordable housing. So. If the population starts receding, people start leaving Greenwich, there's going to be less of a need for affordable housing, is what I'm saying, and I don't know if anybody has any other thoughts on this, it's just that I'm, it, to me, change, this one change is. Something that, that makes me think twice about it.
Well, the thing is that this specifically is moderate income, which is people who work in the town, so unless Greenwich dies completely, we still need town employees here. That would be the thing, if it was, if it was something we were changing with 830G, yeah, you might lose it, but you're hoping that you're always going to have people in town hall, policemen, nurses and school teachers, or we're not going to be here, so and that's who this is for.
And, and don't forget, we are the largest, the town, the town government is the largest employer in the town.
Bigger than the hospital?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I, I'd send that email around, just wondering whether you want somebody to have the flexibility to buy themselves out of one location and create something of equal, you know, value or service to the community. How do you, let's say, you know, a couple of these units are sitting within a building and somebody wants to knock it down and build something new. You find out in New York City, you've got to replace it, but this doesn't seem to have any mechanism to let somebody, you know, buy their way out of an obligation.
Right, there, there is no buyout provision, so to speak, but that really. Right, there, there is no buyout provision, so to speak, but that really more speaks to when you're creating the unit. If one wants to tear down the units, that would be a different issue.
What I've always thought was that, that in 40 years, this kind of very strange thing will happen is that all of these, these affordable units that were created over time, the moderate income units that have been created over time, suddenly start to disappear. Maybe not all at the same time, but they start to just fall off the, you know, and what we still need, moderate income housing, you know, in the future. I think that, that the perpetuity issue actually kind of puts a, puts a real permanence on it to say, yes, we're trying to do something about this. We're creating moderate income housing in Greenwich forever. And I think actually the, the changes here, you know, a lot, a lot of the housekeeping, but I think actually as a specific thing, the perpetuity issue, I think actually is something that's really, something we should do right away.
Yeah.
I mean, and 40 years is gonna happen tomorrow. We may not even be here, but it's gonna happen.
Well, exactly, I mean, we're.
The concept of having something that's permanent, but fungible, I guess, is my philosophical context.
Right.
Yeah, that makes sense, there's a.
Well, I think it makes sense.
Fungible means you could replace it.
Right, I'm sure, I'm sure the planners of the future will have good ideas of how to, how to do that. But the planners of the near future, I think, you know, given the town's three hundred, almost 380 years old at this point, for the last hundred years, you know, we've had this problem, which is a, a good problem to have, I suppose, just in the sense that the town is alive and well. But bad problem in that, you know, we do, we do have to provide this need for, for the workforce, I mean, it's been.
But, you know, I, I just think, you know, it's perpetuity. Is a long time.
Well, we have, we have perpetuity in several sections of our regulations. For example, saving historic structures in perpetuity. So open space in our subdivision regulations is in perpetuity. So these are, these are, I, you know, aspects of the, of any community, affordability, open space.
I fully understand that, I'm not trying to detract from the affordable stock. I'm just saying, the notion that a property owner could provide a substitute comparable, you know, value and utility.
Right. Well, I, I can tell you this, that, that the language did read in perpetuity for the last 30 years and it got changed about 10 years ago to read in 40 years, so. So it changed, change happens and if this.
Has anybody ever come?
Well, one, you just, someone just came before you recently and asked to change their, to change their restriction from in perpetuity to 40 years, since the regulation read that way. And the finding by the commission at the time was, no, you've made the deal, so to speak. You've got these extra units in, in exchange for in perpetuity. So your finding was not to allow it, but you could have, should you have wanted to theoretically. So again, since, since this isn't something that is being used necessarily as part of the thought process by developers, like, something like 830G would be where the Avalons of the world are develop, are, you know, incorporating this into their long-term model. I, I think it's short-sighted, actually, very short-sighted to make it 40 years.
I, I look, I'm not concerned about creating something in perpetuity, I just think.
Having a legal out for it.
A property owner should have some reasonable mechanism to provide an alternative. If, you know, he wants to tear something down and build something that's not conducive.
Maybe, maybe something that we can't do is, is, we're looking at a text amendment right now. I think actually it just is, is, look at the text amendment as we see it. But we have the opportunity, something I always like to say is that, that, you know, we should never just leave them alone. If we need to go back and say, yes, maybe that in perpetuity issue needs to be addressed again, what would it be a better way? Or is there something that could be added to, like you said, like a buyout or a different scenario? And then we can go right back to it and say, you know, you know, let's try that and work on that language. But I think right now with the text amendment as it is, you know.
Well, I mean, the other thing is, lots of things could change in 40 years. Just as an example, maybe the density increases tenfold and the, the finding that you had made in this particular instance previously is, is no longer applicable because you no longer got a deal, so to speak, in, in order to, to have increased density. If, if the underlying density of a zone is more, I mean, so all kinds of things could happen between, in the next 40.
There's no argument with any of that, Kate. I'm just saying.
Okay, all right.
And to no detriment to.
Sherwood's good.
Affordable stock that's gonna get created along.
Right.
Is that there would just be some acknowledgement that somebody could provide a substitute affordable unit to the satisfaction of, you know, the commission.
Right.
If there were redevelopment of some sort.
Or even just a.
Well, that.
Property that gave rise to the initial.
To be, and just to go.
Well, that, perhaps that's something that could be reviewed as part of a look again at the regulation as a whole. That could be some sort of provision that could be added.
I'm proposing a change to regulations. I, I think we should create more than we're creating. So anything we do, I'm just thinking, practical standpoint.
Mm-hmm.
At some point.
Right.
Property owner's gonna be in a, in a tough situation if there's no remedy.
I think that's, what you're saying makes a lot of sense, that the. That there's something unfortunate about a sunset clause here, which is the 40 years. Because you're doing all of this good work and then it goes away.
Right.
But maybe there should be some kind of. I mean, this is, but two generations is a long time. And, and so the question I have is, does it make any sense at all to say after that, that period to revisit it and they come back to the commission for a revaluation of whether or not circumstances have changed? But they can come back anyway, so what difference does it make? So even if you change it, they're, they still have recourse, they can always make an application.
See, I have a different issue than Peter, so we're not.
Yeah, my, my issue is, is different than Peter's. I, I don't propose that once something becomes an affordable unit, it ever goes away. I'm simply saying there should be some means of substitution. Something of comparable value as an affordable unit.
But that's only under a redevelopment scheme.
But that, but that's only under redevelopment scheme from what, from what I'm hearing from you, or is that?
Yeah, that's the only thing that comes to my mind.
Right, so it's not in the initial proposal to build something that one would be able to buy it.
Correct, I just think the simpler we keep it, the better.
Right, yours is under redevelopment, so you, you know, you've, you've done your units and then you want to tear the whole thing down and do something new. Yeah. I, I think the same frankly kind of holds true for historic homes too. I mean, the, the idea again is that they be in perpetuity. And, you know, I often joke, I hope, I hope I'm not the planner who has to deal with it when something like this comes up because I'm sure at some point it will, luckily it hasn't. But I understand what you're saying and you're anticipating an issue that presumably, that probably will come up in the future at some point. And I, I do think it requires a considerable amount of thought and study because it's not an easy question. There's obviously legal issues having to do with permanently deed restricting properties and what it means to quote, undo that. And whether, whether there is a mechanism to do that or how you create the mechanism to do that. So if the, if the commission would like me to pursue researching that, I certainly would be happy to do that. And I think it's, I think it's a, a point well-made, that it's, again, it's an issue that I'm sure will come up at some point and we should be anticipating what to do about it when it does.
But the fundamental question is that when you do a moderate income unit, 40 years or perpetuity has no present value difference in your analysis. So the builder's gonna make the same decision, because 40 years when you discount it back.
I agree.
Right?
I agree.
So that being the case, somebody could always come in in 40 years and say, you need to change this regulation. And we'd go, geez, yeah. So, but it has no, no difference to the investment value.
It may not. But, but as, as, at the end of every lease, well, lease is, is a wasting asset. And so any term, you know, a term life policy is a wasting asset. So if it, if you don't die, you'll get no benefit. And in this case. You know, at the end, at the end of the 40 years, the, the property becomes more valuable, perhaps.
That's worth nothing in present value terms.
No, no, but.
But, but nonetheless, it's a lease, I mean, they're 99-year leases. So at some points, you get stuck with a potato kind of thing.
But then the real estate is, is worth something. And at the end of a 99-year lease, you've got some sort of real, anyway, here's the thing, we could change. Now we're anticipating that the town's gonna continue to have employees, that's my take. And as long as we got employees in town, we should keep giving a moderate income housing. I don't know, that's just.
No, it's quite well taken.
Anybody else? Nick, Victoria?
No, I think I've said my piece.
Okay, so any other comments on this?
I just, I mean, I understand the long-term goal. I don't see us. Really changing to, I, I'd like to see regulation change to stimulate action versus change the regulation for no apparent benefit real time. And, you know, not that I'm discounting having it in perpetuity, but I would like to be making regulation change to stimulate more units versus possibly dissuading units with the change. And I tend to agree with you from a financial analysis, it doesn't change it. But I would like to focus on doing something that creates more of them.
It doesn't, it doesn't, I agree with that thinking.
Huh?
So we're 3-2, I think. I think we're 3-2, right? No?
Well, we haven't taken a.
No, I think, I think, so Katie, I think it's, Peter Levy doesn't want to change the 40 years. Dave doesn't want to change the 40 years?
I'm not gonna, I don't want to talk about it anymore.
Okay. Andy doesn't really want to change the 40 years, so.
Well, let me, let me, I didn't quite hear that. I, I heard, I heard you say, Andy, that about, I'm just actually looking now to get this number, that you want, you're trying to stimulate people coming in, right?
I do.
So under, under this regulation, prior to the regulation change that we had, it was actually 2015, we had 23 units that we were able to produce as a result of the regulation. Since that, so in the last four years, as opposed to the 25 years prior, we have two built, seven approved, and 22 pending. So we've more than doubled over the last four years, what had been done in the previous 20 years. So I, I don't agree that this regulation doesn't incentivize people to come in, number one. Number two, in discussions with the people that are coming in with these, with these applications, 40 years is not even on the radar. So I, I don't agree with your comment.
But if you're, my point is, we, what are we tweaking the regulation for if it is working?
Because it doesn't make sense to have it work in such a short-sighted fashion. The, the idea was when we, when we worked with the Community Development Partnership, we came, you know, there was all kinds of incentives that were added, that was done in coordination with speaking to people. And as it, and, you know, as you know, we've been talking in publicly noticed meetings, we've been talking to appraisers and saying, well, how popular, you know, how, how. How good of a regulation is this? And it's a very good regulation and the 40-year component isn't a factor in that very good regulation.
So that's what we heard, the 40-year.
FAR stories.
We'll see.
And in fact, Jude has told us that he thinks it's probably too juicy.
We'll see in the next four years if in fact it has any deleterious. Have it had any deleterious effect on.
We're gonna claw.
The construction of these units, that's all. If it doesn't, if it, if it, if the trend continues, then we made the right decision. If it doesn't, we'll have to amend it.
Okay, done. So could I have a motion?
So what, done for what? Is it staying in or not staying in?
No, it sounds to me like it's staying in because Peter said we could change our minds again in four years if we wanted to. We could take, we could keep. Did I misunderstand you? Say perpetuity for now, and if we decide we hate it, we'll change it again. Now that said, we did, in full disclosure, Dave is working on an analysis of what can be built under the present regulation, whether in fact it's too juicy for a builder, whether it's too incentivizing. And when he's done, we're gonna talk about it. Okay, so are there anything, is anything else to discuss on the 6-110 changes? The public would just like us to finish. Okay, so could I have a motion on the 6-110 changes?
No, we're closing it, right?
Yes, it's closed?
Yeah, it's closed. Sorry.
Application PLPZ. 2019, 00239 for a zoning text amendment to amend section 6-110H of Town and Greenwich Building Zone Regulations. Various text, text amendments and alterations. Motion to approve said text amendments as provided.
Do I have a second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Um. I knew it didn't feel like two weeks.
So we're not gonna take it?
To Sherwood. We're only gonna do Sherwood because we haven't decided it, because nobody's gonna decide. Sherwood Farms.
We're not doing River Road?
Nope.
Why?
Same reason.
Sherwood. You ready? Applications PLZP, PLPZ two thousand eighteen zero zero five-four-five. And five-four-six, her final site plan and special permit to establish specialized nursery for the propagation and sale of wetland plantings at ten Sherwood Avenue in the RA two zone. Motion to approve the application, whereas the volume of the applicant submitted information dated five-seven-nineteen indicating the total volume of the property is now two thou- two hundred five thousand eight hundred fifty-three-point-four cubic feet, which includes an increase of four hundred forty-six-point-five floor area and four thousand four hundred sixty-five cubic feet of volume, more than the approved volume from a previous site plan of PLPZ two thousand fourteen four-two-five and four-two-six. Applicant submitted revised special permit application, but they request that the commission grant approval for the additional five, four thousand four hundred sixty-five cubic square foot increases in that stack application. Parking, the commission should determine that the nursery use requires parking per section one-fifty-eight. Property is currently used for residential purposes. Site plan chose five overflow parking spaces along the asphalt driveway in the front of the property and parking in the, front of the existing barn. Inland wetlands water courses granted approval, three-twenty-five-nineteen. Zoning Board of Appeals granted variance of lot line setbacks on five-eight-nineteen of the conditions that the mulch bins be limited to six feet in height with no roof, no horse manure to be stored in the bins, and that any deliveries to be made during the permitted hours as noted in Town Ordinance six B dash two. Engineering memo dated five-twenty-three-nineteen indicating that project was approved for zoning building permit. Health Department memo dated eleven-twenty-eight-eighteen indicating no issues with the application. Conservation, project concerns were received in a memo dated three-twenty-five-nineteen. Applicant has resolved those issues. Applicant will be planting a sample wetland plant as a display area near the settling triangular portion of the property. This will provide a reduction in inventory since the customers will be allowed to choose from the plants in the display prior to ordering and delivery. Stock will be held on site for no more than a week and will be protected by a limited mulching and hand watering if necessary. There's no fertilizing of the plant stock. The pile of materials that along the mayor parkway will be removed prior to zoning permit. And the bamboo located in the state property that existed prior to the application purchasing, applicant purchasing a lot shall be, continue to eliminate it as possible and control it to prevent further growth. And, and that's all I have. Any other items that staff requires?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Nomination of Paul Puglaci to the Architectural Review Committee for a four-year term, starting, I would say, at the end of his expiration of his previous term.
I'm sorry, Nick, can you just make a motion to add that to agenda first?
Oh, yes.
Do I have to do that?
Um, yes, please.
I hereby move that the nomination of Paul Puglaci be added to our agenda items this evening. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, go ahead, Nick.
Motion to approve, approve Paul Puglaci for a four-year term to the Architectural Review Committee. Four-year term shall commence from the date of the expiration of his current term.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, the expiration of this, so what would that bring you to?
We don't know. That's why we did it that way, because Marissa didn't know yesterday when his term expired, and she's gonna fill it in.
Okay, got it, yeah.
Sorry, you weren't there. I forgot you weren't there.
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
So like, in other words, you would take, 'cause he's expired, so you-